Call this meeting to order. Welcome, everybody, and we appreciate you being here and taking the time out of your busy days to be here for, so we can finish up this budget review. If we could stand and have a pledge of allegiance, I will lead us in that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Once again, thank you, and we will turn the time over to Manager Foggan.
Thank you, Mayor. It is an absolute pleasure to be here in person. That, we were just talking that that doing things online is just such a chore. And they trust me to do the technology, which... All right. So I think this is where we left off, and so we will just continue what happened. Okay, perfect. So is this the second page to that? We finished the first page.
Did we get, did we, Council, did we get through all this page? Or are there still some items we want to talk about on this, right? On page eighty-six?
It's not this page. We haven't done this page yet.
Well, I know I crossed out, we talked about the electric vehicle experience.
Oh, it is, yep, yep.
Right.
Okay. So we had dealt with the electric vehicle experience. I believe that the decision was to leave that in, to move that to contingency?
Yes.
Okay, great. So we'll Fleet Bay remodel. So Fleet Bay...
Ron, hold on. I think we got past that. I think we were on the billboard relocation, because I have a note that ADA will pay.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Correct?
I, in my notes, we're all the way through the building, online building plan, submission, submittal. So I have, we're starting on page two-hundred of the book.
Oh, on that, okay.
Okay, which, which project is that?
Facilities, Equipment Systems Project, Public Works Admin Facility Design. That's where I show we're starting.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, that's kind of where I remembered it, too, so.
Sorry.
No, you're good. All right. So we have these two projects, Public Works Admin Facility Design and the Public Works Building A Remodel. These two projects are basically trying to deal with a pretty old building with changes in our team in Public Works. So I actually, this is a project that Jack has been working on. Where is Jack here? Do you want to just walk everybody through kind of the, what needs to happen? I know that one is to do with our need to accommodate restrooms for the fact that we have a lot of women now working in the Public Works where that hasn't been the case in the past. So, Jack, if you want to just walk, walk us through those two?
Sure. Thank you, Manager Foggan. Good evening, Mayor, members of the Council. As Mr. Foggan indicated, there's two separate projects. One of those is a bathroom remodel, and it will accomplish what Mr. Foggan was saying. We have a women's restroom with one stall, and that probably worked when that building was built in about eighty-nine, ninety. The demographic has changed a lot, and so there seems to be a line for that. And so we would expand both bathrooms, make them actually ADA compliant, and increase the number of stalls for the women's restroom as well as lockers and shower. The design, that was a design project to looking forward. We're running out of space, as is everybody else. We actually let that one sit for a minute as we're finishing up or going to complete a space needs assessment, and then we've rolled that so we can finish that, pending that space needs assessment, so we can capture the need for, you know, the number of people looking to the future.
Are you saying part of this is a space needs assessment, or?
That's, it's actually in my operating budget for a building, so it doesn't show up on the capital side.
And is that, is that assessment going to be done by an outside source?
It is.
Is there any reason why we can't just do it ourselves and count up the number of people we have and the growth, and how many spaces we need?
Honestly, I've not done a space needs assessment myself. Those are typically done by an architect, and there's a little bit of research in those as well. One of the things that we're working on, Krista's team helped me get a list of positions, because each position may require a different type of space or amount of space, say for a director or chief. You know, their office probably has a small area for, you know, meetings, you know, small conference table, that sort of thing, down to you may have small cubicles for most of our field crew that don't spend a lot of time at a desk. So I guess there's a possibility for us to do that. I would reach out to them for some specialized, I don't call it specialized, they probably keep up with the industry a little bit and the space needs, you know, and what should be for each of those positions, and give some recommendations to us on that.
The reason why I ask is I've seen several space need studies since I've been on the city council. They're expensive. I know the police department had one, and it just came back and said, "Yeah, we need more space, but there isn't any more in this building to really make this happen." So we paid for a study, but then we never found a solution to their space needs because the building isn't sufficient. I am guessing your building probably isn't sufficient either for all the need you have to put everybody in a cubicle or in an office.
That's accurate. One thing that we are trying to do with this space needs, though, is also a capital projection. And so we'll look out five, ten, fifteen years and say, "Okay, you know, here are your priorities. Here are the areas that are the most cramped," and try and give those a priority ranking. And then it would be up to Council to help us establish, you know, funding those potential projects, whether it's a one-year, or five-year, or ten-year plan. That's, that's what we're working through.
Sure.
Yeah, what I would say on that is that we've, we have done need assessment in the past. What we haven't done is carried that forward to actually having that plan be implemented. So it's one thing to get the plan, set it on the shelf and not paying attention to it. It's another to actually take that out and say, "We will be out of space in year seven or year ten. What are we going to do about that? Are we going to build a new building? Are we going to add on? Where's that money going to come from?" That's where the city in the past in doing needs, space needs assessments, have fallen short, because those, those assessments have basically called out, "You will need this much more square footage," but the city never budgeted to add a thousand, two thousand, five thousand square feet or to do a new building. And that's, that's, that's where they've, we've fallen short. So when you do any study, the point is to have it not be a dust collector on a shelf somewhere. You take it out five years, ten years, fifteen years later and say, "Well, we never did it." Well, it's, it's got to go past that getting, getting the report to actually being actionable. And that's, you know, where we are in this, in, whether it's admin, whether it's fire admin, whether it's the police station, whether it's Public Works, is there's only so many square feet, and we're, we're done. Where are we going to put additional bodies? And that's, are we going to buy another, you know, building somewhere? Are we going to build a building? We have got to take those plans to, to the next level.
Well, I think where we really fall short is in funding, and it would be smarter for this council to sit down and have a discussion about all the buildings that are already cramped, and if we want to tackle that, how we want to tackle that. I don't think Jack needs a space needs study. I believe that they don't have enough room. I believe the police department doesn't have enough room. City Hall's getting cramped. But it's a question of priorities. We, we don't have a lot of money to build a huge city complex, so it would be a question of, is this a priority? Do we want to get a bond for this? Do we think it'll pass? That kind of conversation instead of spending more money on a space needs. That's just my opinion. I, I know you need space, you know?
Yeah, it's, it's honestly not the space. The space needs has to be done for the capital needs. And I guess what we're, I think we're kind of on the same page with that. It won't be just a space needs, "Hey, you need an extra thousand square foot." It's also going to take into account that extra thousand square feet in this location is a higher priority because of X. This is what it's going to cost you, so over the next five years, that gives us an opportunity. Three years, one year, five years. If it's a bond, it happens, you know, quicker. It gives us an opportunity to budget for those, and I say "we" as in the collective, obviously that's the will of the council, to budget for those projects and, and move those projects ahead to actual building. The, another point in there, but got off on something else. But it, it's really not as much about the space needs. It's also taking that and making a capital needs projection out and, you know, allowing those to be prioritized. And the second point I was getting to, you know, it's looking at our building stock as a whole, and it may not be a matter of, use PD as an example, the site is the problem. Sure, we can build on to the building. Where are they going to park? So do we try and build on to that location? Do we look at building at a new location and moving another department into their existing facility? Do we try and get property adjacent to it? There's a lot of other things that we're going to look at past. Yeah, you're out of space. So, you know, it could be a point of us being able to, to shuffle different departments or divisions around to accomplish those goals of providing the sufficient space for their operations.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on these two items? All right. The next one is Public Works Generator. This is out in fiscal year twenty-eight, and it's really is part of our emergency management, being able to operate the shops and have Public Works building available if and when the power goes out and we're in an emergency. So being able to have those key facilities operate and be able to work on vehicles and equipment in, in that kind of setting, extremely important. The Transit Center feasibility study, this is basically the effort to try to make sure that we are locating, not only locating, but actually we will have a transit center that will actually work. And we're kind of using Walmart's parking lot right now for the transit hub. And so this is part of our transit study that will actually help us locate a, or find a location for it and put into place a plan to move forward with actually building a transit center. So, can I get that right, Jack?
Yeah, I would like to add, this is a grant-funded project, and it is required as part of the grant to do this, to actually get funding for the next phase. So, and that's not something we can complete in-house. It has to be done by a planner that, that is good for transit.
So the one, we're getting a hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant to cover this?
There's a match of twenty percent, yeah.
Okay, and then do, do we expect to be able to get a grant that would cover the whole project for the, the new transit hub?
For the transit center? There is a cap on it. I don't remember the exact amount. Couple components we're looking at. There are other transit systems around us that we could potentially partner with. One of those is the Peach Springs Transit, or Wallopie Transit, rather, sorry, I wrong spoke that incorrectly. Wallopie Transit, WayCog is completing a regional transportation plan, so we could be looking at something with them that would have a regional leg that isn't necessarily operated by us, but a, call it a tenant within our facility. So there's a potential, yes, that it could fund the whole thing, but it depends on the size. There is a cap on the grant.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Next item is vehicle lifts. This is exactly what it says it is. Basically, we're looking to replace lifts within the shop to make them safer and bring them up to the specs needed under our safety requirements. Questions about the lifts?
Yes.
Go ahead.
In the current facility, are there currently, and I may not have the right word for it, the dropdowns where they can go under?
A pit.
A pit?
Yeah.
Do we have pits?
I don't think we have any pits.
We do not have pits. And these lifts, just for a little context, these lifts are for heavy vehicles. Pits wouldn't necessarily be ideal. There's potential to add those. There's risk with those as well. These will pick up trash trucks, fire trucks. These are portable column lifts that lift about eighteen thousand pounds each. We currently have a four-post, fifty thousand pound lift, something like that, but it has exceeded its life. We actually had a failure on it, and they won't pass it for its annual certification. So these lifts will replace the heavy lift that we use for large vehicles.
Any other questions? Okay. Next item is our Centennial Park Field Five lighting replacement. That is scheduled for fiscal year 2026. We've been in the process of replacing lighting on our fields, and this will, this will be part of that program. The next one is the Centennial Park Fields Lighting Fixer Replacement for this upcoming year at five hundred and forty thousand. Again, this has been part of our lighting safety for our sports fields, and this is just the next round of those lights being replaced. Questions on those? Next one is our Driving Range Safety Netting Replacement. This, the netting is being replaced in phases. We think that the next four years, we will be able to replace all of the netting. Obviously, this is a safety issue. Is the wind and sun eat up the netting? Having a driving range is a wonderful asset to the golf course, but being able to protect houses and golfers and anybody by the driving range is extremely important. So this will be done over the next four fiscal years, and so I think we can get that all done and buttoned up. And we usually get, what, ten years out of that netting? So, questions on the netting? The next one is Golf Triplex T-Mower. That's for fiscal year twenty-five. The specialized mowers that are required for the golf course and just the amount of grass and turf that they're taking care of dictate a need for pretty large mowers. That's for fiscal year twenty-five for sixty-five thousand. Questions about that? Okay. Next one is the Lewis Kingman Park Upgrades at nine hundred and twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred and eighteen. I believe most of you remember that we actually started off with this at a lower rate, and there was actually the State Parks Grant that we applied for and actually got. And so this project changed quite a bit from its original concept, where it was just going to replace bathrooms. Now, with that grant, we're going to be able to do a whole bunch more work. So a big upgrade to Lewis Kingman Park.
Question. With the Route sixty-six festival?
Yes, sir.
With the downtown project that we, we passed, are we going to move that to downtown with the Centennial of Route sixty-six?
So we've always had the goal of having the Route sixty-six Fest grow from the Lewis Kingman Park location. You're going to see some of that this year, and over the next couple of years, we'll continue to look for people who are interested in doing other things, because we want multiple activities. So by the time we reach 2026, the hundred-year anniversary, there, we're hoping that there will be activities along our portion of Route sixty-six from the powerhouse all the way down, maybe even past Lewis Kingman Park. But that is, that is where we're currently proposing to do our, our feature of the Route sixty-six Fest. Good question.
When will this project start?
So that is a great question. It's actually, yeah, so we went through the grant process last fall, and we were awarded it, and then, so basically, it goes into effect fiscal year twenty-four, so we can start anytime after July first. Anything else on Lewis Kingman? Okay. Was there anything? Okay. Dump truck replacement, not much glamour there. It's just replacing an existing dump truck.
I got a question, Ron.
Yes, sir.
Do, do departments ever share capital, like dump trucks? Like if, does that happen from time to time?
It does, it does.
Okay, because I, I don't know if it's this dump truck, I, I see reoccurring capital purchases across multiple departments, and I'm sure that some departments need them, but I think that there might be some other departments that utilize them less frequently than others. I'm just wondering if we could all play in the same sandbox and get along and share, or not so much?
Yeah, well, you know, obviously, when a lot of this equipment is actively being used, summertime as an example, Parks Department working on a project that needs a dump truck or a backhoe or, or whatever, can't put their project on hold to wait for a dump truck to open, but I, or become available. I would say that the departments do a really good job of sharing equipment, usually on bigger jobs where you'd need, where you need two, two dump trucks and the department has one. Then the opportunity to not slow down the project is there. The ability to speed it up may be available. So I would say that there is, there is sharing across the departments where possible, but just, you know, a mower that mows parks can't be used to mow the side of the, of the road, right? So, you know, there's, there's a quantity or a quality to, to sharing as well, so.
Thank you.
Yep. All right. The next one is playground equipment. This has been an ongoing capital project. We've had this in place, well, I don't know how long we've been doing it, at least since 2018 or 19, where we've, we've basically budgeted a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. With that, we have installed new playground equipment. We've replaced older playground equipment. We've installed shade structures over in a number of our parks. And so this will just be our continuing effort to make sure that playgrounds in our parks are, have the fun quality as well as safety quality needed to protect the participants. And then I know that a lot of folks have appreciated the shade structures that have gone in to cover the playgrounds during the day. Yes, sir?
Yes, Ron. Remind us where Mojave Park is? Is this the one downtown on the south side of the tracks? No?
Yeah, yeah.
That's Mojave Park?
Yeah, there, we have two parks on, well, I actually have three parks. Some, we have Sports Park.
Right, the big one.
And then we have Mojave Park, and then we have a small one, Hubs, yes, thank you, Hubs Park.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Any questions about the playground equipment? The next item is our Recreation Center. So the Recreation Center is basically a two-phase project. First phase is the design, locating and design of the Recreation Center, and then anticipating building that concept or design in fiscal year 2025 at fifteen million. Questions?
Yeah, I have one on that.
Yes, sir.
Have we done anything at all on that, planning-wise?
Uh-huh. We've actually just got the RFQs for architects, and are in the process of reviewing requests for qualifications on the architects.
At what location? Have we pinpointed a location?
No, we have not. That's part of what we're asking them to help with.
Well, part of my thought is, is this is a recreation center. Should we hold up and see if we turn this into a recreation event center? And do we tie this into the hundred and seventy acres we have south of the freeway? Is this something we want to sit on for a little bit?
I, I would support that. I, I don't know.
Leaving the money here, of course, but let's start looking at what, you know, because I know you said something about economic developments, spending some money trying to figure out what to do with our land south of the freeway.
Just a concept, uh-huh.
I mean, a rec center there, to me, an event center, and if we tie the rec center into it, you know, the, the plan I had looked at before, I mean, you can put a police fire station there, or police substation there, you can put a fire substation there. I know we have a fire station going over at the park, but
Right.
we haven't really talked a whole lot about police substation. I mean, that hundred and seventy acres could turn into something big for the city, parkwise, motel. Once you get an event center there, you can plan restaurants and hotel pads around it.
Yeah.
So I would like to maybe see if some of us could sit in on some of these meetings talking about what we're going to do with this.
Yep.
Where's that hundred and seventy acres at?
Just south of Kingman Crossing.
It's, yeah.
South side of the freeway.
It's the south side of the freeway.
I would, I would support that, and I would also, I, I would like to see, I mean, we all, as a council, should decide what that concept looks like, and so, and what, and I don't, I wouldn't want us to spend a bunch of money for a group to come back and say, "Here's the concept plan, ta-da," and we're like, "That's not anything that we wanted." So I, I am in favor of the event center, and I, I know that we're getting approached by different entities to look into event centers. So, yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to see what that looks like. I, I just don't want to be so narrow-minded to think it could just be a rec center. I think we have more need in our community in addition to a rec center.
I agree. I think this needs to be a workshop item, and that way, everybody can participate. I think that if you asked each of the council members what a rec center means to them, it's something totally different. And so I don't know how you can have, you know, an architect making a concept plan without talking to us about the items that we want this rec center to include. So I think this needs to be a workshop in the next, say, sixty days, maybe less, and we look at these event centers and what And we look at these event centers and what's being proposed as a public-private partnership. And then what we see the rec center looking like and how that fits into the Kingman Crossing property. Anybody else?
I'm, I'm on board with that.
I'm on board with it.
Me too.
So with the design for that, the ED team is working with the individuals that are working, how, how far along are they?
They're, the Selberg and Associates are building basically bubbles, possible bubbles for possible development ideas for how that commercial property can develop. So, yeah, it's just, it's just high, like 60,000 foot level stuff.
Okay, and is, is, that's not going to be in here either, is it?
No.
Okay. I'd like to request that that information stop pending this information that we're, we're trying to put together. Because they, they may go hand in hand. So I, I would hate for them to get too far along in the concept. And I think, you know, I'd like to hear what council thinks. This is the design and concept of the, the 170 acres that we have?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
No, and basically what that will do is give you the ability to say, this is how this property could possibly develop, right? There's nothing in that concept design that would keep you from saying, how about this spot being a rec center? How about this spot being support for some kind of commercial development? So, yeah, I mean, it's, it's designed, that concept plan will give you the ability to start pointing at, this can be here, this can be there, this is where, this is possibly how the road could flow. So it actually gives you that flexibility to be able to call out, hey, we, this pod is where we would like to see an event center.
Okay.
I, I agree with you, Chair, to put it on hold. It's $15,000, we don't even, $15,000 for the design.
Oh, okay.
This is the other one. Yeah, okay. It's just, let's talk about what we want to go there first before we spend money on a design that we don't know. We haven't even come together collectively to say
What we really
what we want to do with it. Maybe as a whole, the council doesn't want to sell the land at all or do anything with it. Maybe they want to leave it open space. That'd be crazy, but maybe. So we should start there.
All right. The next one is a skid steer loader, just kind of a normal bobcat type thing.
Can you tell us more about what they're replacing? I, I found the, sorry, Mike. I found this justification a little weak. It doesn't really say what they currently have and, and how old it is and why we're, why, why we're replacing it.
Skid steer?
Yes.
The skid steer that we currently have is one that we bought used about five years ago. And it was pretty heavily used and it won't handle a lot of the attachments that we need for it to use now. And the, the year of it when we purchased it, I think it was, like I say, pretty old. I don't remember exactly, but it was pretty heavily used and
So it has a lot of hours on it?
A lot of hours and in pretty weak shape. And like I said, it's not, it's not a big enough one to handle a concrete jackhammer and things like that, so.
So what, what size bobcat are you purchasing then?
What's that?
What, what size bobcat are you purchasing in this?
You know, I'm not sure, my park superintendent is the one who put that together. And I, I don't recall exactly the size that he had. It's just, it's one that'll handle more different apparatuses that we need, stump grinder and things like that.
Post, post hole digger.
Post hole digger.
All that kind of stuff, right.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions about the skid steer? All right. Next one is Sunbelt Sports Park. So this is a phased project over the next three years. With basically giving us playfields, playgrounds, parking lots.
Ron, when are we breaking ground for Kingman Crossing again? Is it going to be in July?
No. Kingman Crossing will, the, the design for Kingman Crossing is supposed to be done 195% plan?
In July?
In June, on June 30th or thereabouts. And as far as what I was just told by K R M C that that's still on schedule. So it will then go to ADOT for final, their final review as well as the city. That will then probably take anywhere from 30 to 45 days. Once ADOT accepts that as final, that will be 100% plans. And then it can go to bid after that point. So I see Kingman Crossing breaking ground this fall.
Okay. I'm just, I'm just nervous about, I, I just want Kingman Crossing to break ground beforehand. Because I always see us taking on more liabilities before increasing our assets. I think Kingman Crossing is an asset. I have no problem with the park. I just don't want to get caught stranded that we don't have Kingman Crossing, but we have a park and no way to upkeep it or pay for it. That's all.
Yeah, well, if, I mean, the park's been on the plans for quite some time. We're prepared to take care of it. It's, it's really, to be honest with you, it's so needed and has been needed by the community for a long time with the ability to be able to run a much bigger soccer program. I know that our soccer folks are desperate for the space and would like to do tournaments, which actually sports tourism is a big part or can be a big part of a community's economic development process. And increased funds, tax funds, just from that alone are mu, are very much needed.
Excuse me, Manager Foggan, I just need to remind everybody, they're having a hard time hearing you. So if you can just please speak directly into your mics, maybe pull them a little bit closer. And if you turn your head, make sure your mic goes with you because it cuts off.
Sorry. Sorry.
Manager Foggan, I know we just approved the drainage. So can you tell me, do some of those funds, are some of those funds coming out of that 2.3?
Yes.
Okay, can you tell me, can you refresh my memory?
So the drainage project itself is 1.9 million.
Okay. And Mike, can you, for the benefit of all of council, because you did such a great job when I was at the commission meeting this last week. Can you tell us about the drainage project and exactly what it's going to do? Because that's going to be step one.
Yes. The, the drainage channel is going to go around the east side of the property, basically, and then empty out on the other side of the school. So it actually does help the, the drainage that goes across and floods the schools as well. So that, the drainage channel has to be done before we can do anything on the park. You can't start building a park and then have it all wash away. And more water flows across that property than flows into Monsoon Park, which I found that to be pretty surprising when I saw how much that was. And that property was all donated to be a park, so. And we're going to also have about eight acres that we have an IGA with the schools. We'll have some additional fields there as well, so.
And can you also tell me, when would you start the drainage project and how long would it take?
Well, as soon as the design gets finished, we would obviously move that right along with the design that we have. So it will depend on how soon they can get the design done. And we've got that all in the works already, so.
So are we talking like late summer? Are we talking, I'm, I'm trying to put a timeline together.
Closer to winter probably for construction and things like that. Once we get the design complete and
So that 1.9 won't be spent until around the winter? The drainage will be done?
Right.
Hopefully, Kingman Crossing is well on its way. Rancho right behind it. So the ti, the timing of it could actually work fairly well.
I think so.
Thank you.
So will you start the park construction then right after the drainage?
Obviously, we'll get the design complete for the park as well and then start on it. We're going to phase that, do whatever we have enough funding for, basically, to put a couple of fields up front and parking lot and restrooms and things and
You don't have the design completed yet?
It's not completed, no. We have some, which council has seen at some reports that I've done. We have the preliminary design, but obviously there's a lot more that goes into that for the irrigation, for the lighting, for all the, so it'll be much more detailed, obviously, than that preliminary designs.
And will you, do you think that they'll have that design completed then by, say, winter when they are starting that?
That design won't be, we'll have to budget for that and get council approval to get going on that too, so.
Okay. Sooner the better.
Yeah.
On the drainage, are they deepening that wash that's there? Or are they extending it out? How are they doing it?
No, that wash, the wash that's there is on the west side of it. And that's part of another project that is in engineering. And I'm not sure exactly what the status of that one is, but that's on the, the west side of the park, basically. This is going to be a new channel that's going to be put in along the east side of the park.
Okay. I was just by there yesterday, I guess.
I'd be happy to go out there with you sometime and show you.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
One more thing to ask. Should we be putting money into this year's budget or the 24 budget for design of the park? That way they can be working on it?
So this does have money for the start of that design?
Okay. Well, what about the complete? I mean, I, just to phase this park, I think we need to see the whole plan. And I mean, I understand we can phase it as we build it.
Right.
But let's have the whole plan done so we know what we're building.
Well, and that's, that's what Mike was talking about, the concept plan that's already been developed is in place. It's just a matter of detailing out sprinkler systems and
Well, I'd say let's get that done.
Yeah.
That way, and then we phase the construction.
Right. Well, to your point, is that 2.3 enough to cover the, the final of the design as well as
I believe it is.
the drainage?
I believe it is.
That's what, that's what J2's
Move forward with design of the complete park.
Yeah.
Okay. We'll get something back to council on that then for the approval of the design.
Yeah, thank you.
And I just, I can't, so in the drainage, I, I don't want to correct Mike, but the, the drainage that we're dealing with is an impact to the park and not the school. There's two different washes that are basically hitting that property, one on the east. And that's what this drainage project will take care of. The drainage on the west, we're also taking care of. That drainage is the drainage that floods the school directly, like flows it right through the gymnasium. So just, I want to be clear, I don't want anybody to feel like that we weren't clear on that. Because Mike's right, the amount of water that sheet flows across this property is, is huge. You just cannot imagine how much water is actually sheet flowing across this. And we would, we would lose the park infrastructure if we don't deal with that with the drainage. But I, I, this is not the drainage that is running into the school.
When, when will that be addressed?
So the drainage, the airway drainage project is basically going to start being addressed in this next fiscal year.
And is that all going to be, is that all going to be through washes? Or are they actually going to put in dial or hour wind? I live near airway and I
For the park, it's going to be a man, we're going to make a drainage channel to get the, to keep that water from flowing across the park. And it's going to be a benefit to the school, no doubt, because they own, they own open space below our park that will actually redirect the water away from that. And part of our agreement with the school district is if we do this, we will actually be able to utilize their open space to be able to expand perhaps the play, the play areas as part of the overall park concept.
You're talking that area right on the corner of airway and whatever that cross street.
No, the property that we're referring to is
It's on the other side of the football field.
Oh, okay.
The park side is on the other side of the football field.
Right. And the, and the school properties to the north, just butts up against that property?
Yeah, I'm familiar with it.
Yep.
Okay.
So.
I have a question, Mike. Being that it's a park, and I was here playing softball, 16, when Centennial Park opened up. What type of fields and sports fields are we going to have out there besides soccer? You're going to have softball fields? Are we going to keep Kingman South for the Little League? Can you kind of explain that to us a little bit?
Well, that's the plan, to leave Kingman South side for Little League and Centennial for softball. And this is going to be more open space for soccer fields primarily. But obviously, they, they'll be multi-use fields, which all of our fields basically are multi-use fields. You know, that Centennial, now they play football on them, they play soccer on them, they play, their playgrounds for the academy, they're used for everything. So this out here will be mostly multi-use fields, but primarily soccer, big open space fields, so. And, and obviously softball practices, we could go on there and things like that too, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
I just have one last comment. And that's that I just want to kind of put an exclamation point on getting this one completed. Because while I'm really excited for soccer fields, I'm more excited about the fire station that we're going to add there and being able to properly cover the east bench. And I know we've got that out in '26. But, you know, we've got to get all these other pieces of the puzzle in place so that that doesn't keep getting pushed further and further out. So all the pressure's on you, Mike. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I would just say that the, the, the five acres or a little less than five acres for the fire station will not be tied to the park development. Because we understand that those are two completely separate projects. What's going to be important is the road network to make sure that the fire trucks can move up and down airway properly, so.
The drainage, it is dependent on the drainage though, correct? Because that will still flood if we don't, we don't get that fixed.
Yeah, no, I mean, yeah, it's, yeah.
Getting it all moving
Yeah, yep.
in the right direction.
Absolutely. All right. Any other questions on Sunbelt? All right. The next item is ongoing expense on trail development and enhancement. So this is another area where we've been concentrating on. And we've actually written and been awarded several important grants. So this, this money actually helps us cover required grant percentage requirements, as well as just being able to continue to work on our, our trail development, so.
That's, that's all I was going to ask was about the grants. Because I thought one of the first things that was on, when I first sat on council, one of the items on the consent agenda was mostly grants and then a small portion coming from the city. So we still have those grants, right?
We have, we're working on finishing a, a big one this year. I don't know, we've been pretty successful over the last couple of years on trail grants. Don't know if that will continue or not. But we will keep writing them. And if they keep saying yes, we'll keep accepting the money.
All right.
All right. The next item, next few items are just really basically building improvements or site improvements. So we have the KDP block wall. That's the Kingman Police Department block wall. Obviously, security and safety are important in part of what we do in a number of our departments. This one is an improvement to the block wall system that currently surrounds the back part of the police department. Just, I'll just go through all of these building improvements or grounds improvements and we can cover, circle back on it. The KDP break room update. So police department in an effort to provide a spot to take a break and be able to have it be appropriately sized and adequate for our personnel. There's the 78,000 for that. We have the KDP Emergency Operations Center. We have the KDP Emergency Operations Center Training Room Security. One thing that we, we did as part of the, kind of the remodel that already happened in the front area, if you've been in that space, it's a lot nicer space. But in that, there's still some, to be an EOC, still requiring some additional security and upgrades there. We have the, the KDP Emergency Operations Center Training Room Upgrade. Again, with that effort to improve the, that space as an EOC. Basically, if there's a declared emergency or we're dealing with a local emergency, this is where the operations of that emergency are going to be directed from. So having that space available and usable during an emergency is key to a successful recovery on, from an emergency. The KDP generator is also part of that, being able to provide power to the building to keep heat on in the wintertime and air conditioning and be able to power phones and computers and lights. That is anticipated for fiscal year 2025. That is actually going to be something that we write, write a grant for. The restrooms can, need to be updated. There's a request for a shade extension from the parking lot to the building itself. And then there's south parking lot cover, so both entrances into the police department from the back area. And then.
Can I stop you for a second?
Yes, please.
I, I noticed we're getting two generators.
Yes.
So please forgive me.
You're fine.
Maybe they need to be different sizes, but the one for Public Works is 653,000, and the one for Public Safety, 404, or am I, am I looking at something?
No, you got it right, they're just different sized generators.
Okay.
They're going to, they're going to be asked to run much more at the Public Works Department and multiple buildings in the shop versus just the police station.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Good question.
I have a question.
Sure.
On the generator.
Yes.
How is it powered?
So, I can't remember, are they called out? Right, and I think we're going to, we're going to continue to do diesel, is that right, Jack?
It is, that was carried out as diesel for a couple of reasons. One was cost, we actually asked the contractor, the designer, to look at gas, and it significantly increases the size and cost of the generator as well. You're no longer a standalone system, so you're reliant on your network of infrastructure around the city, mainly your gas system. And, you know, in some type of severe EOC event, it was opted to go for diesel for the best probability of being able to stand alone.
And by gas, he means natural gas.
Yeah, sorry, thank you.
Just in case. It's not gasoline.
And now, are, are both generators sufficient enough and adequate enough to power what you guys are going to need?
Yes, so we did a load study, we pulled, we actually pulled two, I say, we, Tina and her team pulled two or three years' worth of utility data for us, for us to get usage, and then we actually did a load study inside the, the equipment at each facility. And so the design is complete for both of those, and they are sized to handle the full load based on those, those studies.
Any other questions? Any questions about the KDP building grounds?
I actually got a few questions. I, I think my first one is, when I'm looking at, when I'm looking at the, something like the KPD block wall, I noticed that it continues over the course of several years, I think from '21 to '20, sorry, '22 to '23 to '24, and they change in price every single year on our five-year capital improvement plan. Is this money getting spent? Is this money fixing different portions or, like, are we spending it or are we just pushing it along? That's what I'm.
So there's been a few projects that have been pushed along, supply chain, availability of contractors, the ability to get the block, all of that has been part of, of moving some of these projects forward. Jack and his team have been trying to identify JOC contractors, and we think we've done the lion's share of that, so all of those people are now in place. And we don't really expect to see the block wall show up again after fiscal year '24.
That's all I have for right now.
Okay.
I, I guess I just want to echo that. It's hard to see these projects sitting here year after year, and then you wonder, well, are they even necessary? If you're not, if you're not, you know, completing them within four years' time? Not to say that KPD doesn't need that block wall, but like, let's get these done. Let's get it, let's get it through and over with and, and get them what they need and get this off the books, because, yeah, there, a lot of them are languishing for years, and it's just a block wall. I mean, block wall companies, they worked through COVID. There was like one small month where you couldn't get block unless you had planned ahead, but, so, so a lot of the contractors did have the block. I think we could have got this done years ago, and, and so I just don't want to see these, you know, sit here any longer. And if we need, you know, if it's a problem of you don't have enough project managers, you know, to oversee, like, I can't, I mean, I can't imagine, it seems like Jack is, he has so many projects, so, so just whatever it takes, just get these done.
And I'll let Jack speak to kind of the timing of it, and this is he and his team. I wouldn't say it's a lack of project managers, but, Jack?
So it, it's, it was a number of things. The good news for this one is, I have a proposal that you guys should see at the first meeting in June. So we did struggle getting some JOCs and some things together, you know, so we can get these projects out a little more easily, I guess, if you will. The prices for those, I actually had one bid that came in a little over half a million dollars. We're not there, so there was some work to getting to that point. To your, to your point on project managers, there, there is a significant number of projects going. The one project manager I have currently, assuming I get to keep him after this week, has, has about 30 projects of varying size from the engineering analysis that we're doing on particular intersections, you know, for five, $6,000 all the way up to the downtown infrastructure project, you know, which is over $7 million. So hopefully, those get better and we'll see those moving forward. We got a number of those that are moving, and so I'm really hoping that, that I get to, to keep those moving with my project manager. If you look at those turnover rates just in building alone, it was like 167%. And so every time we start over, your progress doesn't stay consistent, so.
So I'm glad you brought that up, so you have a lot of turnover within the construction manager, project manager position?
I, I'd really say in a couple of key areas. Project manager is one, pending, pending this week. Getting through the design on a project that you champion, the downtown project, actually will have gone through four project managers before we move to construction. Again, building maintenance was about 166, 167% turnover. And so what you guys see on the sheet is capital improvement projects. There are also projects that, that you identified that land in our operating budget. So we also have those projects going, and, you know, streets is another one, they were 100% turnover. And really, when you're looking at, at what we do in Public Works, there's kind of three keys to it, right? We, we've got projects, we've got personnel, people, and we have programs. And so my ops supervisors are trying to manage people and programs, and then my project managers are trying to manage projects. And I say project managers, like, you know, they're split up. There's two project managers for us doing the work of the five divisions that I get to work with, plus we have another one that's working on some of those and water and wastewater. You know, in total, the city has four, but really, we have two, because some of those have been vacant. Two of those aren't in Public Works, ours are full at the moment. So again, what we end up doing is shifting, instead of having my ops managers manage the people, the personnel and the, the programs, sweeping and weed abatement and all those regular services that we do on a, on a daily basis, I end up pushing projects to them as well. And with a, with a significant turnover rate, as which you can see, the training and the, the getting people up to speed, I've got a great group of people, I will say that right now, the, the people I have are putting everything they got into it, but it just, as we talked about with PD, there's costs that you don't see, not only in, in, you know, actual hard dollars, but also in progress to projects, so.
So if you're fully staffed, do you have enough project managers?
Fully staffed helps, for sure. I actually tried to look up some benchmarking for the number of project, number of dollars per project manager, something like that, so I don't have anything to compare that to at the moment. We're also in kind of a unique, a significant time where we are. You know, the $7 million project for the downtown project is one of the largest projects that we've had approved in some time. We'll have the draw site and some other larger projects. So I, I'm not advocating at the moment for additional project managers, but there are some very significant projects that are coming down the line that we're, we're moving people around to make happen.
Yeah, we're, we're, and we've talked about this, we're in a position where a lot of really big things are right around the corner, and we, whether it's a block wall or a park or what, we want, we, we need to get these things moving along, so I want to make sure you have the tools you need, and if that's more project managers, then today's the day to say so.
So I, I guess where, why I didn't say, yes, we need, you know, five more project managers is, we, we have four positions, right? Two of those in Public Works, two of those in, in engineering and Phil's team, and two of those are vacant, have been vacant for a long period of time. So if we, the Royal We, were fully staffed, we would probably be good. You know, back to the pay plan and trying to recruit and, and retain those project managers, that's the, the key to this whole thing, right? It doesn't matter, if we have the position, I can ask for five more. If I can't fill them with qualified people, does me no good.
And what, what is the change in the pay plan for project managers?
It was about $15,000 on the market, is that about right?
Yeah, so it will take the top of the range and move it from 77 to about 93.
And what, I'm sure you have a good idea of what people are leaving for. Do you feel like this adjustment is enough for you to start attracting and retaining project managers?
I do think that it's a, a great point to that. I am painfully aware at the moment that what they are leaving for, some of those we, we can't match and, you know, in dollar to dollar, but when you look at the full compensation that Tina and Krista's teams work on, I think there's a probability that we'll be able to, to recruit and retain, retain those individuals with that new pay scale, for sure.
I think you have somebody leaving to go to ADOT?
Actually, it was for a private consultant that works for ADOT.
What's the, do you know what the pay is for that?
The one he has on the table, the offer page I saw, that was $100,000, non-salaried position. I, I can't speak on behalf of the benefits, you know, again.
Sure.
With the matching rates for our ASRS and things like that, you know, for a, a full compensation comparison of the two. I do know that even just dollar for dollar, they were beating us, but again, there are some benefits to working for the city, and so with the help of Krista and Mr. Foggan, we're hoping to retain, but I won't have that answer until tomorrow.
Okay, and would you say pay is the number one reason why you're losing people, why the turnover's so high?
Yes, building is another great example. We made an offer to the top of the pay scale for the building maintenance op supervisor. They came, they showed up for a day and politely told us, thanks, but no thanks, and walked right back out the door. And that, that was a well-qualified individual, and they, they decided that they weren't willing to be here for the price we had on day one. So, and we, we had worked really, Krista's team worked with us, we worked really hard to recruit that person, you know. We sold our benefits and everything to get them to come in, and so they, they come in for one day and says, yeah, you know, looking at housing, I thought it was going to be cheaper, I can't do this with my family. And we waited, by the time we waited for them to, to provide the notice for their current employer, go through the background checks and everything, we were well over a month. And then to get one day and have them turn around, walk back out, it's, provides a significant impact to our operations.
Sure, sure. And the two project managers, you have two right now, still?
We do.
Will they see a pay increase on, you know, to get them in a more competitive place that maybe they don't start looking on indeed?
Yeah, they'll be slotted up into that new pay range.
Okay, because that's, you know, I hate to take so much time on this, but it's just, if you don't have the people to do all of these projects that we're asking you to do, we're never, we're just not ever going to make any progress. And I think that's the frustration when I'm looking through the old CIPs and like, how long has this been here, you know?
I'm with you. It's painful for us as well.
Yeah.
And, you know, I, I actually appreciate the opportunity for you guys to get some insight on the challenges and things that my teams go through. Again, they, they, they work their butts off. I've got a great group of people, you know, you can't, you can't fault somebody for trying to better their position for themselves and families into the future, but, you know, it, it doesn't help us, the ones that are sticking around, so. No offense to them, but again, it's just an impact to the operation.
Sure.
I think it's, it's important to have the people in place, employees or people working on these projects, to get them moving. Otherwise, what's the point of having five-year capital improvement plans if you can't bring them to fruition? I mean, we could sit here and daydream all day long, but we, we do have to get the ball rolling. And not only that, Mr. Pallanti, but we, we appreciate you and any other department head bringing to our attention any ways that we can make our city better at any time. I tell Manager Foggan this all the time, one's judgment is only as good as one's understanding. So I don't have an engineering degree, I don't understand a lot of what goes on at Public Works, et cetera. But when you bring it to my attention and explain it to me like I'm a third grader, sometimes it helps, because I, I'll never be on the same level of mathematics and calculus and physics that you are, but, you know, when you break it down for me, I, I could have a basic understanding. So we appreciate anybody who reaches out to us and explains any type of problems or situations that we could help rectify.
I appreciate that, Phil is, Phil is our engineer, I specialized in lunch, so, you know, I'm trying to catch up with Phil, I guess.
Erin Council, I, I highlighted the project manager position, the old pay grade versus new pay grade and how it was going to adjust. That was one of those key positions that we had identified hard to fill outside of the market quite a bit, so we knew that that was one of those ones, we were going to really help us on our recruitment and retention, so, thank you.
Thank you. I just have one last question, his comment made me think about this, and, well, I'd kind of thought about it earlier, but would there be benefit in going through this year's upcoming projects and clearing out the ones that maybe are not as important? And getting you down to just like what our priorities are, what's going to have the greatest impact, moving the rest off so that your team can just focus on the biggest priorities?
So we, we kind of, we kind of do that ourselves as well, right? We're looking at the resources, be it people or contractors or otherwise, and are pulling those projects. Some of them are low-hanging, easy to get out, some of them are not so much. I think we have a lot of the resources in place, and, and we've actually seen a lot of great forward movement, even just the last couple of months. You know, the, the Curtis, my project manager that works with me mostly, has taken a hold of a lot of these projects, especially since my building op supervisor had left, and we've really been driving these things forward. So I know the numbers don't reflect that at the moment, but we have a lot of key pieces in various stages of, of planning, design, and, and then even proposals. And again, some of those are going to be coming to you in the near future for approval.
Okay.
So I, you know, I'd hate to, to delete any projects, you know, with us seeing some of these rolling over, knowing that's why the next year's worth aren't as significant, although we have some big projects in there. So I honestly think we'll, we'll be able to achieve those pending us losing people.
Okay.
Rob, I think it's, no, Rob, Jim, sorry.
Rob, I think it's, I'm not Rob, Jim, sorry. I think it's key that you just said, uh, we can get these projects done if we don't lose people. That's, uh, all of us are, as small business owners and business owners, that we're all suffering from that, trying to keep and retain people and key personnel, because there's so many different opportunities out there for good people to find jobs.
There is. Everybody is facing, every contractor we've talked to is facing the same thing.
Yeah.
You know, the, the wage increases and things to try and keep up and recruit and retain have, uh, you know, everybody's felt it. From the grocery store to paving a road, it's, it's everywhere. So you're, you're very, very right.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Uh, next project is the magnet building drainage repairs. Uh, basically the, the magnet building has been, um, the way it was designed and laid out, it, uh, tends to flood and the need to get the water away from the building is needed. So, um, nothing fancy about this one, just get rid of the water, so. Um, questions on magnet building? Okay. Uh, next one is the adaptive response vehicle. Uh, this vehicle is for the fire department. It will actually allow our fire personnel to go up, get out and fight wildland fire and basically get to locations where a normal brush truck, um, cannot get to. Uh, so it's kind of a rapid deploy, uh, vehicle that allows us to, to not only fight fire out in tougher terrain, but also get to people if, uh, if they need help as well. So questions about the, about that vehicle? Okay. Uh, next one is our apparatus refurbishment. Uh, this is a really cool project where we're actually, um, Chief Jaeger and his team, uh, found a company that actually will take and refurbish, uh, an engine that still has life, but will breathe brand-new life into it. And so this is actually, uh, uh, going to give us an apparatus pretty much brand-new, uh, with a used vehicle. So, um, just want to thank, um, Fire Chief and his team for actually finding this as an option for, instead of replacing an apparatus that would be hundreds of thousands of dollars more.
I, I did want to thank Chief because I think this is a fantastic use of, uh, resources. And so I wanted to personally thank you. I, I, I see on the next page, we've going to replace two apparatuses. So the cost of a new apparatus at this point is?
Just under a million dollars.
Just under a million dollars, so. I, I really appreciate you, Chief.
Questions about the refurb? Okay. Um, next one is actually an apparatus replacement. Um, this one is an older vehicle, uh, older apparatus that cannot go through refurb as much as we would like it to. Uh, so, um, we're currently, uh, planning on nine hundred and fifty thousand for that, um, replacement. And then again, fiscal year, uh, twenty twenty-seven, um, another apparatus being replaced. And you can see what the estimate, uh, is over the next couple of years. Um, funny thing about fire trucks and, um, ordering them and buying them is it's become quite a challenge in that they, they won't build it for you for like three years. And so trying to find, um, a good deal. And we've actually been fortunate, the last vehicle, last apparatus that we put into service are, uh, we saved a huge amount of money, um, on that one. And I know the chief and his team have been trying to find apparatuses that won't take three years to build. Um, and so, um, that's what we're planning on for these two replacements is trying to identify whether it's a, a model vehicle or a, a test vehicle, um, that will, can be re-retrofitted or made to work, uh, in our fleet is what we're trying to do. There's cost savings there as well. Questions about apparatus replacement? Okay. Um, the next three items are basically fire station, uh, remodels or upgrades uh, or new, new construction. So, uh, fire station number one, remodel at eight hundred thousand dollars. The, uh, fire station number two, training room or training area, uh, at forty thousand. And then, um, we anticipate fire station number, uh, five, uh, being constructed in fiscal year twenty twenty-six. That's the one we were talking about out by the sports park. And of course, with that, we will need an apparatus to go in the bay. And so, uh, anticipating both of those for fiscal year twenty twenty-six. Questions about fire stations?
I wish there were, yes, Ron, thank you. I wish there, especially obviously if we get Kingman Crossing and, uh, the Ranch of Santa Fe TIs in. By, well, let's hope they're, they're in by that time. Uh, I wish we could move those up, but I know it, it all boils down to dollars and cents. Because we will have the need already there for them.
Yeah.
But once again, it's, but it's funding.
Yeah, and, um, it won't, it won't be far off, but yeah, there is not, um, there's not an overlap, that's for sure.
Okay. Thanks.
Yep.
Um, Ron, on the apparatus replacements, there's ten thousand dollars on each one that says other. What is the other?
So other is going to be the equipment that goes on the apparatuses. We try to use as much of existing equipment as we can, but some, some of it just needs to be replaced as well. Okay. Um, the next item is our fire station alerting system. So, uh, one thing that we have been doing in the stations are basically the climate or the environment for cancer reduction. Um, but what is not happening is automatic alerting within our fire stations. Uh, that is one of the big pieces to getting our crews out the doors and meeting our expectations for when, uh, they're, when they get in the turnouts, get in the trucks and leave. And so, um, this, this fire station alerting system, uh, is key to keeping up with our, our, our quick response of getting our, our teams out the doors as quickly as possible. Questions about the alerting system? All automated, so.
So this, this will go in all the fire station? I know there's some that have it already. Is that correct?
So is there?
Fire station twenty-two has it, I think.
I'll let Chief speak to how many.
Evening. Um, station two, when we did the remodel there, uh, we were able to, uh, do the lighting and do some of the system itself, the radio. Put a new radio in. It's still missing some components, um, in that system. The other stations will be all, it'll be a new system. The, the radio systems in the station that we have now are just antiquated. Um, they wouldn't even tie in with dispatch, so we actually had to buy pagers and make the system. And we've band-aided that, um, since I've been here. Um, and so last year, we were able, able to get the components with the new dispatch consoles. So we can send the information out in the new consoles. So now this is the, I guess, second phase of that. Um, this funding was pulled when COVID hit. It was one of those items that we just decided to wait a little bit on. Um, but now we're at a point with dispatch being all brand-new and able to push it out. Um, this is all, it's speakers in the station, it's lighting that comes on automatically in their bedrooms. Um, it's also got some marquees that actually flash the address and what the call is up on the wall. So as they're getting dressed, they're able to see that information, so.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Actually, Ron, I got to comment. Chief, I appreciate, I appreciate your mention. You just mentioned, when COVID hit, we had to remember too, a lot of these projects were put on hold because as a city, we tightened the belt instantly, but not knowing how things were going to happen and what was going to happen. Fortunately, it worked out actually even better for us, Mayfair, Wayfair funding, all that kind of stuff fell into place. But no one knew when that was all going down. So you bring up, we talked about that a little bit earlier, a lot of these projects, why they weren't done. They had, they got put on hold and then trying to get them back into the system can be difficult. So thanks for mentioning that.
Any other questions about the alerting system? All right. So our next item is our hazmat response trailer. Um, the hazmat response trailer, uh, needs to be replaced, um, needs to grow in size. And so we have that, uh, slated for fiscal year twenty twenty-five. Questions about that? Okay. Our ladder truck refurb, refurbishment, again, um, great use of the funds to be able to maintain a, a vehicle that's important, um, with, uh, without having to replace it fully. Questions about ladder truck refurbish?
I have a question. I see this, this truck is a two model.
Uh-huh.
And the other two trucks that were retired out are a two thousand and four and I think a nine eight. Is there any reason like the two thousand and four truck couldn't be saved and maybe reconditioned for the fire to make a backup?
I'm just looking at the, uh, the other two trucks we're going to retire out. The two thousand and four, would it be worth keeping to get it refurbished as a backup?
So I'll let the chief correct me, but the answer is the number of hours and wear and tear on that two thousand and four much greater than the two thousand and two ladder truck.
Okay.
And if I could just add to that, this decision wasn't made by us. We actually had the vendor that does the refurbishment come out. He evaluated what vehicles that were appropriate to do. And it was based on mileage, hours, um, as well as working with our fleet to, to determine other issues with the vehicles, so.
I was just concerned for fire station number five to have a, a backup truck, especially since they're so hard to get.
So that's your refurbished ladder truck project will be the backup for station five.
All right.
Which also gives us a backup ladder truck.
Okay.
To give us better ISO ratings as well as if our current ladder truck, the new one goes down or out to the shop for maintenance, it gives us another ladder truck in the city. The problem, right, that we had, only having the one platform is when that, you know, went down, we had no ladder truck in the area that we could utilize. And so it, it made us panic a little bit.
Okay. I just saw the years were close, so I figured I'd ask.
Yeah, good question. It's just, uh, years, years on the road versus number of hours and miles on it, so. Good question. Um, the next item is our type six wildland vehicle. Uh, there is one, uh, slotted for fiscal year twenty-four and then another one for fiscal year twenty twenty-six. And these just help us with our wildland, uh, response.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
How will you staff these?
They'll be staffed with on-duty personnel. Um, it, it's going to give us the ability, again, we have one ordered right now. It's supposed to be here at the end of the year. Um, that's the one you, you guys approved a while back. Um, it just, the type one vehicles, which are the big red fire trucks, we just, as you can imagine, we can only take them so many places. And there's a lot of city land that we have to get to. Um, and these vehicles give us that ability, uh, to get to those areas. We will staff with on-duty personnel.
Okay. And do you really need two?
The size and the area that we're in and, and then remember, I also talked about the wildland program. And so hopefully that one of those, we'd always have one available in the city all the time. The other one can be out generating revenue, um, working in the state wildland program, supporting BLM and our other county partners.
And you'll staff the second one with on-duty staff as well?
That'll be off-duty folks that get called in to go on those wildfire assignments.
Okay. And they'll be on call?
They're funded by the state.
Okay. And they'll be on call?
When they go out on assignment, yep.
So there's no opportunity for us to get some subsidy from the state because we're essentially keeping one on standby for?
No, we, we get paid anytime it rolls out.
No, I'm talking about the apparatus itself.
It get, that is actually part of what they pay for.
Oh, okay.
We, we have a state contract that lists all of our equipment, even our big red fire trucks. So if they call us to do structure protection somewhere, we will bill for everything. Anytime that truck is requested by state lands, we bill for it.
All right. I know there was a point in time where that we were not billing for it. So I, I highly encourage us to dip into those state coffers and bill them, please.
Yeah, Chief Jaeger, you pretty much answered a couple of questions that I was going to ask. So this includes the one we already approved and there's going to be an additional truck?
Correct.
And when did you say we were going to get the one we already approved?
Um, it, it's probably, geez, I can't remember the dates. But we're probably looking around September, October, when, when it's done. They're, they're waiting on a chassis. They're trying to find a Ford chassis. That seems to be the problem. Jack can help me out with that one, cause he knows what that's about. Um, but then they'll build it and send it to us.
Okay, thank you.
I just got one last comment on this, uh, section, and I'm wondering how the rest of council feels. I'm, I'm interested in the idea or possible design of a public safety complex, if possible. I'm not entirely sure what the remodel of fire station one entails, but I know that the men there have one shower and then some of the other stations have two to four showers. And it's difficult when you come back from a, um, a call to get all cleaned up right away. And then when you're looking at some of the KPD projects at the current building, it's old, rundown, dilapidated, out of date, over twenty years old. I mean, you look at the photos on the bathrooms and the break room, sorely inadequate. And if you, I want to give all emergency safety exactly what they need or what they're, what they're requesting. It seems like this year is, has a common theme of public safety. But if you hold off on some of these remodels, I think you could get one and a half million dollars. Clearly not enough to even get close to a public safety complex. But I'm, I, I, I'm interested in entertaining the idea or the concept or a design of one. I, I would like council's input and then also of, of course, in the future. Or I, I'm not sure how much time we have, also the chief's input as well.
So I will just say that the remodels of the fire station do not solve that. The, the fire stations still have to function. And you, fire station number one, the reason why the price tag is the way it is is because that fire station really needs to have those upgrades that you mentioned. Um, we have, um, as part of the needs assessment and as part of looking at basically the building, let's call it the facilities' needs for the community. Um, that is, uh, exactly what we've, we've been envisioning and want to move forward with is a public safety building that, that brings together that economy of scale of being able to house fire and police, so fire admin and police services, um, in, in one building. It's pretty common across the country, um, to be able, um, to do that. It's, you know, we, we're probably a couple of years out from being able to do that. So these smaller projects will, will help us utilize the space. And those buildings will be important moving forward, um, whether, whether it's police department in there or another department. Um, and fire admin is a perfect example, a building that we're look, we can look at across the street right now. No ability whatsoever to remodel inside that building, uh, because it's a cement wall building where you just can't go in and take, and remove walls and that kind of thing. So, um, it is definitely. and remove walls and that kind of thing. So it is definitely in our future for a public safety building where that activity between both fire admin and police services come together, so.
I would absolutely support sitting down and talking about in a workshop, how we can make that happen and how we could maybe move it up a bit. You could sell fire admin, you could sell the Belli National Bank building. I mean, I think that would help Bill Street out to get the 911 center out of there anyway, and open it up for retail. KPD, you know, just to give you some. Carl, you just have to retire, and we won't have a city attorney anymore to tell us no on everything we wanna do.
No.
So I think that there, I think that's a great idea, and there's a lot of opportunities there to make that happen. To give you an idea, my grandma used to work in the KPD building when it was Citizens Utilities when I was a toddler. That's how, I mean, that building is older than KPD even, so. Yeah, it, the thing is, what I've learned is if you put it out there and you have a good plan, and there's a positive justification for it that the community will support, which they will always support, Kingman Fire and Kingman Police Department, then you can find a way to make it happen. But until we sit down and, and really say, this is where we wanna go, it won't happen, so.
Also, one last, and one last comment on that. We're, we're in the process of trying to recruit and retain good employees. And I don't want our employees embarrassed by the facilities that they have when they go to show off, hey, this is where you're going to be working, this is where you're going to be stationed, this is our department, this is what XYZ looks like. You know, sometimes that is a major decision in deciding to come work for a place. My, my current work faces that as well. We're sitting on top of each other. Attorneys, they go to law school to have offices, or at least the hopes of having an office. And when instead, we're packed in there like a can of sardines, or having a cubicle, we, sometimes we get a little turned off from the idea. So when it comes to, there's, there's a whole slew of benefits, but it also has to do with retention and recruitment, and actually having the proper facilities that our emergency services deserve. And I think all of our employees deserve nice places to work out of, nice facilities. And, you know, these are just things we have to tackle one step at a time, one bite at a time.
Have maybe a workshop, and let's start a conversation on what it looks like.
All right. Moving on to streets, so we have the ADA improvements. This has been an ongoing project that we've been doing with CDBG funding. And so the, the 1,231,000 will be a continuation of what we've been doing with ADA sidewalk improvements. The ADA transition plan, one of the things to qualify for CDBG funds is that you have to have basically shovel-ready projects to qualify. And so the ADA transition plan will actually help us identify additional locations. You may recall, the last three ADA projects, sidewalk projects that we've done are all along the basically Route 66 corridor from the powerhouse all the way up to the El Travador Hill. This next phase takes us up a little bit further. And so that transition plan will be important to be able to continue to apply and qualify for those CDBG funding sources. Questions about ADA improvements? Okay. The asphalt patch truck, the asphalt spray patcher, and the crack patcher, these are all part of the street maintenance program that we're undertaking this upcoming fiscal year. And are part of that set of employees that we discussed during the street, streets budget. Questions about those items? The downtown infrastructure project, does anybody have any questions about that since we've been talking about it for some time now?
I do.
Go ahead.
It was a joke. It was a joke. What I have, Ron, is where we're furnishing the trucks.
Hold, hold, hold on, hold on.
That would be the joke. Okay, smiling, you have questions?
Where we're furnishing the trucks and the labor to do all the work that a contractor would normally do, where is that money coming from? What budget?
So, so there was a reduction, we were looking for a reduction in the price of the project. And so is a common, this is a pretty common practice with projects where we have the equipment to be able to help reduce the price. We do that. The downtown streetscape is part of that, that would be kind of just our donation to bringing that project in budget. So it's about.
Where is the money coming from? Is it coming out of streets?
It would be part of streets, and it is just basically utilizing the equipment and manpower to help remove and bring material in. It's, I think, as I recall, the, the hauling off and hauling in was just under $200,000 estimate to do that work in-house. Probably around $40,000 or less.
And then the aggregate that you're hauling?
We, we have it stockpiled. We've, we just keep it, we keep a pile of it, and we're just gonna use that as the road base to put the road, Beale Street, back in.
So Mr. Foggan, if I could provide additional information. So the, the aggregate is actually gonna be millings. We ran a gradation, and the MAG, the AmeriKopa Association of Governments allows up to 100%. So what you're gonna see going under that road is actually other road, Andy Devine and stuff that we've milled out. So it's a material we use for maintenance and things, but it's not an aggregate we had to purchase from a gravel pit.
Yeah, I know, I understood that. One credit. I just don't want to see us lose the ability to get the streets done in the neighborhoods in order to get the downtown project done. I don't have a problem with the downtown project. I didn't vote for it, but I don't have a problem with it. All, all I'm concerned about is that we do the 5 million on the streets, and that we know where they're gonna be done and when they're gonna be done. So that we see that they do get done instead of carrying over.
Right. And I would say that the, the streets crew that we've talked about for the, basically getting the streets maintained will not be part of the crew that is helping. We anticipate about, because we're gonna do the downtown streetscape in phases, with each phase taking about three months. Basically, that equates over the whole length of that project, about 30 days of hauling for a nine-month project. But we're gonna do that with our existing crews and the work on the rehab of streets. That, that work will be done at the same time as we're hauling away and hauling to.
Okay, but what I saw was that it's at their demand, when they want it, when they need it. So if we're in the middle of a project and we need those trucks, they're going downtown. That's, that's the only thing I'm saying, is I don't want to see the streets dropped in the neighborhoods. That's one of the main things that the people in this city want, is their streets repaired. And we have been woefully negligent in doing that. I mean, we all drive on the streets, we know what they're like. They're, they're terrible, and they need to be fixed, that's all I'm saying.
Yep, understood.
So I had a couple of things. When, when do you anticipate a start date for the downtown?
Right now, it's the, whatever the Monday after the 4th of July is.
The 11th of July.
Mid-July?
The 11th of July, that week.
And to Councilor Ward's point, when we start those residential street projects and the grid that you've done for the city, I really would like to see some promotion of that to the citizens as to what areas are going to be done and when they're going to be done. I think that's gonna go a long way, the more that we can push that information out and have a tentative schedule of when they can anticipate seeing those districts being worked on. So I really would like, I really would like to see something on that as those are happening.
I mean, we would, we would have to provide notice, too, that way people don't get locked out or stuck in their.
Yeah, there would definitely be press releases as part of that, but I, I think Vice Mayor is suggesting even more than that.
I would like to see a list similar to what Jack gave us when we were in the meeting, showing what was on the, on the list for last year, shed by street and the cost.
So I don't have each individual segment broke out. Dive back for just a minute, talking about the trucking for the residential. So as we talked about in past council meetings, we're actually working with Mojave County. And so, you know, if there's a need for us to fill in for trucks, we will. But right now, the conversations we're having with Mojave County, call it turnkey for lack of a better term, we'll provide traffic control, covering like the steel, the man-holds-valve cans, we'll, we'll take care of the ground support. And then Mojave County will have its crews and equipment actually taking care of the chip seal. So the, the competing nature for the trucks won't be such an issue right there. As well, the contractor in the, in the agreement portion, they, they, we have some language in there that gives us the ability that, hey, we can't help you at the moment, not to delay their, their, their project. But if you look, we did include some trucking in the proposal that was brought forward to council. Actually, still had some trucking in there to cover us for those types of events. So they won't be left high and dry, leaving the, the project stagnant because it doesn't have trucks. And so with the county, again, pending council's approval of the budget scenario, we actually have the list of streets. I'm sorry, they're broke out, we'll, we'll make a pretty picture. You know, and then we can put them down on, onto individual roads when we get to the project level, and we're providing notice. We're usually doing that press lease, press release a week ahead of time. And then, you know, 24 hours to 48 hours ahead of time, we're actually hanging flyers. So for the big picture, yeah, we'd love to be able to say this scenario's been approved for the next eight years, and work with Phil and get those on some of our out-facing GIS apps to where the public could see, okay, you know, year one, two, three, four, you know, when their, their neighborhood would be in those processes.
I would like to see what we're gonna do this year before we vote on this budget. I, I just, I see what happened last year, I don't want that to happen this year, especially in the neighborhoods. Because we've told people that we're gonna do it, we need to do it. And we need to know what we're gonna do.
So residential's are all chip seal?
Yeah. I don't have a problem with chip seal. It's a whole lot better than what we got.
Yeah, the, the maps that we have, I've shared some with Mr. Foggan, we can, we can share those with you as well. That shows arterial districts, arterial collectors, and then the residential districts, there's six of them. And then it shows, you know, 1, 2, 3, 4, we'll just go in those order. And then arterial collectors work a little bit differently because we really hone in on the type and severity of distress and, and try and select a treatment based on what we're seeing in the roadway. You know, we don't wanna chip seal over something that has a base failure. But the residential's, assuming it was approved, we have year-over-year, six different districts, you know, one through six, and, and starting with District 1 and working through District 6.
Okay.
Councilman Ward, if I can just go back to your original question of the funding, Mr. Foggan's correct, there is a portion of it that is coming from the streets fund, but most of the funding source for this program is the general fund.
All right.
Thank you.
The next project is our Eastern Street Improvement. This is airway to Cullument. This is the realignment project, and that is also followed by the Eastern Street Improvement, two other projects. This is actually the two projects that will ultimately extend the improvements to Eastern Street all the way to Pasadena. We, this was part of our funding from what was gonna be the state rural transportation bill that went through the House and the Senate. And then when the budget was released, Eastern Street was left out. And so we currently do not have our anticipated funding to do the rest of Eastern at this time. Tina, is there anything you wanted to say on that? So we, we basically have asked our, our local state reps about how we were not awarded the three projects that we actually had submitted. And they were not part of the budget process, other than to vote on what was provided. And so Leo, one of our state representatives, Biassucci, has said that if there are, is another rural transportation bill next year, that our projects would be his top priority. So as disappointed as we are about that, that's, that's currently where we stand with the Eastern project.
Mr. Foggan?
Yes, sir.
The first Eastern, Eastern Street project for this year, fiscal year is funded, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Just the other two. And in my conversation with Leo, he also told me the same thing.
Yeah, yep.
For the other two?
Yep.
Okay.
So the, so the other two from Kamul to Detroit and Detroit to Pasadena, they're currently not funded?
That's correct.
So I have a question. Were we getting WACO funds?
That's for the realignment.
Okay, so that's just for the realignment? Okay.
Yeah, this was standalone money as part of, of the state rural transportation bill. It was, again, it's hard to believe that projects were cut out of it when it went through both the House and the Senate pretty much unanimously.
And those projects were identified as the bill was moving?
All, all projects that were in the bill were maintained until the budget was released.
That's unfortunate.
Yep.
Well, we hope our local legislators will fight harder for us next year.
Yep.
So the Eastern Street realignment is still on?
Yeah, it's grant-funded.
That's what I thought. I thought we had.
Yeah, it's the other, it's the other two legs of Eastern.
Oh, one quick question, Mr. Foggan. Then start date, possible start date for that realignment?
So the realignment is probably going to be, looks like August.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Okay. The next one is the H SIP safety projects. These are state-funded projects that are intended to improve safety on streets where state has worked with the city to identify locations where speed's an issue, or that it may be just unsafe for pedestrians or drivers. And so H SIP, we've, we've just recently finished an H SIP project up on Stockton Hill. These are two additional areas for H SIP funding. Questions about that work? Okay. The Wallapai Mountain Road, Central and Seneca Turnbays. So these, these two areas are in need of dedicated turn lanes to keep traffic moving on Wallapai Mountain Road. So both Central and Seneca, both of which are pretty heavily trafficked, will give them a dedicated turn lane, being able to allow traffic to continue to pass by. And so I think most of the traffic is left-hand turn. So these will be basically left-hand turn bays onto Seneca and, and, and Central. Questions about the turnbays?
Possible start dates? I know I have a number of citizens. Possible start dates? I know I have a number of citizens asking me about that and complaining about Wallapai Mountain Road.
Jack?
Jack, all these projects, project managers, I know.
Yeah, it's a reoccurring theme at the moment. So that project is currently under design, anticipated to finish the design by the end of the fiscal year. And then we'll start moving toward getting proposals as soon as that's done. So hopefully, if everything lines up with contractors, probably sometime in the fall, we'll be breaking ground out there.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. The next one is the I-11 Airway Avenue Prospector to Rancho Parkway. That is part of our Rancho Santa Fe project. The Kingman Crossing Boulevard, that is our, of course, Kingman Crossing TI is going to require us to connect Kingman Crossing to the East Bench. This project will take Kingman Crossing and run it up to Southern. And that's partially funded by the development agreement that we have with KX Ventures. The Kingman Crossing Traffic Interchange itself, again, we talked about that a little bit earlier. And then the Rancho Santa Fe Parkway Traffic Interchange and Parkway itself at 56, or 54,671,000. That is basically the Rancho Santa Fe TI and the road that will put the connection to the airport. Questions about the, any of the TI stuff? Okay. The next item is lighting power upgrades. This is ongoing effort for lighting of our streets. So these are the, the cabinets for our streetlights, right, Jack?
That's correct, Mr. Foggan. We got a handful, specifically on Beal, Andy Devine. There's some very old cabinets that are less than favorable to work on. So we're replacing those to better our system and make them safer for our, our teams that are maintenance-ing and working in them.
And this has been an ongoing effort to replace cabinets and the insides to make sure that they're up to date, technically advanced, to be able to handle streetlight timing, that, that kind of stuff. Questions? Okay. Next one, we've, we've covered the pavement preservation. So this is the pavement preservation projects in all their different forms. And then you can see that being carried out year after year for the on, basically ongoing, I think we had it listed out for 15 years, on seven, yeah, fiscal, so it runs to fiscal year 30? 30. So. And that will do what Counselor Ward was asking about, is basically putting us in every residential street.
Yeah, just clarification. That will, at least five million out of each of those years will be spent in the neighborhoods, right? Is that what we agree?
It, it varies by, by district, because some of the districts are 25 up to 32, 33. So it just depends on, yeah, sorry, sorry, thank you, Mr. Foggan. You know, less than 30 miles to above 30 miles per district. So it'll vary. But every year, those roads in those residential areas will get hit. And the, the fluctuating miles is captured in our budget.
Well.
I was saying, when we talked about this originally, we were saying five million a year on neighborhood streets till they were all done, were we not? Was it just me?
The, the funding, the, the amount of money needed to be spent is what'll be spent. You know, if it takes five million, if it takes three million. But I guess the end goal is to treat all those roads in the residential areas in a, in a district, right?
Yeah.
So the, the goal is for us to treat all of the miles in each one of the districts. So if it takes us three million or five million, again, those, those numbers are captured in the, the budget scenarios we ran. So it, it's not going to be just a strict $5 million budget.
Well, when we talked about it, that's what we talked about. And it was five million a year.
I don't recall that conversation.
For each year?
No. We, we did talk about.
We did.
All the, no, we did talk about all the, all the residential streets being touched in a certain amount of time by district. So depending on the miles that are in that district, that's the funding that's going to go towards them. But we never talked about spending $5 million in each district.
Not a, not a specific amount.
It wasn't a specific amount.
Okay.
But I did have a question, Jack, on the districts. Do you feel like, I mean, I, I feel like after this first year, you're going to have a better idea of what you have in all those districts as far as how, how you're going to be able to navigate through them, how much time it's going to take. So, you know, you could, I, I doubt, or maybe you can, can you give us an idea of how many of those districts will be touched in the first fiscal year?
Sure. So honestly, the way it's budgeted is one per year right now. That is, that is based off of the number of square yards. So we did capture some, some additional funding, call it, because there's some districts that are larger than what the county could accomplish for us. We talked about that in one of the last budget sessions. They, they said they could do about 25 miles per year. Anything past that may be exceeding what they have capacity for. So we have a potential for using some contract in that as well. Always looking to beat the system. If we say we're going to do 100 square yards and we have the funding to do two, that's what we'll do. But as it stands, each one of those districts represents a year. So starting, you know, 24, we'll do District One, 25, two, and so on and so forth.
So each district will be touched at least every, how many districts are there, you said?
Six. There's six districts.
Okay. All right. So each, every six years, a district will be, okay.
And of course, remind, as a reminder, we're talking fiscal year '24. So hopefully, by, after July 1st, we will start seeing something going.
So we have actually recently talked to the county and we're sending them some information and have those pieces moving because the county indicated that for them to chip seal for us, it would be probably in the late summer into the fall. And we've been having these conversations, you know, as we were having them with council as well. So they actually accounted for that in their budgets and things. We're paying for everything, but just in their allocations or their, Tina has the, the right word I'm looking for. But anyway, the county is, is already been, been anticipating us coming to them. And, and so we met with them a week or two ago, actually having another conversation on that.
Thanks, Jack.
We, we just approved four contracts, like a month in April, I think we did them.
Yep.
Those are going to happen in this fiscal year, aren't they?
Portions of them are. Right now, working with the contractor, they're looking at starting the middle of next month. They'd hope to be started earlier, but with everybody, between materials and weather and, and personnel, they got pushed out further than they'd hope. But they are working on the maps and things for us to put out as well. And like I say, the, the tentative schedule right now is the middle of next month to start on some of those.
Mid-June.
Mm-hmm.
And those are, are non-residential? Those are our feeders or are they residential?
That's correct. Arterial collector.
Arterial collectors. Okay.
Will it be chip sealed?
It varies. There was everything from crack seal, crack and fog, up to some slurries and microseals. So, and again, the, the residential collectors, we are using some chip seal in those. But we, those being our heavier roads, we are looking at the, the type of distress, the severity of distress. Also, you know, council in the past has said that they want to try and include bike lanes whenever we do a major rehab. And so, you know, Wallapai Mountain is a great example of that. You got an inch and a half of asphalt above the lip of gutter. One, it's passed a, a chip seal, even the program, you know, working with the engineers. On the, the distress and the severity of those distresses calls for a heavier treatment. And so, you know, if we want to accomplish both the best life cycle, including bike lanes and, and providing the best bang for the buck, some of those are going to require more than, than a slurry seal, a surface coat, whether it's a slurry chip seal or anything else.
All right. Let's see, where did we leave off?
Skid steer and cold mill.
I wish we were on the top. Good try. Yes. So skid steer and cold mill attachment, this is scheduled, this is a piece of equipment that's scheduled for fiscal year 2025. Basically allows for us to do some milling, local milling, not huge amounts, but in small chunks to take care of problem areas. Questions about that? Okay. Stockton Hill signage upgrades, Kino and Gordon, I mean, not signage, signal, sorry. With the heavy amount of traffic, both at Kino and Gordon, there's definitely some upgrades that need to happen to, to those, those signals. And so, Jack, I believe there's turn indicators that are part of those now, for, going to be?
That's, that's correct. Kino does not have, currently does not have any left turns protected. And so this project would go in and add turn phases to all of Kino and then to Gordon, east and westbound. Stockton Hill north-south actually has left turns. And this project is based on, I believe some of you were here, we did a report, it's been quite a while ago, on accidents around Kingman. And these two are in the top 10, like toward the top of the top 10 intersections in Kingman for crashes. A lot of those are left turn related.
I would imagine a fair amount of red light. I know I've noticed a lot of red light problems.
Yeah, a lot of the crashes we see are in a tenet, in a tension. Some of the roads are at capacity and people are in a hurry, and that contributes to it as well. And they're trying to, trying to jump the gaps and they just, this, this will improve the, the intersection all the way around.
Thanks.
Questions about signals upgrades?
Yes. Well, I thought we'd finished streets. And then what's the temperature of the council? Because we're almost done with streets, but it is 7:30. We've already added two hours. Do you guys want a five-minute break? Or do we, can want to continue working on this tonight? What are we doing? Everybody's good?
What do you mean by good? Like, good, keep going, or good, you're done? Like, I want to know.
I'm going to keep going.
I'm going to keep going. I was hoping we could take like a five-minute break after streets.
Okay.
Okay, I agree.
Great. I just, I wanted to make sure that we made a call. Didn't want anybody drowning.
Okay, that's what we'll do.
All right. So the next one is the Stockton Hill Road widening. So some planning, design happening in fiscal year 2025 with some of the capital improvements happening in fiscal year '26. I actually like this timing because I think it will give us a better idea of what's happening at Kingman Crossing. And I, I really think that what we will ultimately see is that we are developing a new commercial corridor that will take the pressure off of Stockton. And not saying that Stockton doesn't need to be widened anyway, but I think this will really give us an opportunity, having it kind of out a couple of years, to see what ultimately the effect of both Rancho and Kingman Crossing are to our current commercial corridor. So we, we know that this is needed, but it may be not needed quite as much if, if people are utilizing other commercial areas. The next item is streets, the street sweeper replacement. We have a pretty aggressive street sweeping program, important for our drainage, stormwater issues, and just keeping our sidewalks, curbs, gutters, and streets safe. So that will just continue our ability to keep streets swept and with equipment that isn't breaking down. And then traffic interchange landscaping. This is a project that we're working, trying to get ADOT to come to the table and see if they won't help participate. They've been reluctant over, since I've been here and prior to me getting here. They've not wanted it to touch the interchanges, other than maybe inmate help clean up some weeds. But in order for us to be successful in landscaping the interchanges, we're going to need the water systems, sprinkler systems to work. And we think that that actually belongs to ADOT. They, they're the ones that originally installed them, and they are the ones that need to put them back into working order. But we do, we do need to see interchange cleanup. We've got huge interchanges with a, a large amount of land in them that we, we'd like to see be more inviting, both on and off ramps. So that's what, that's what this project is.
So I have a question, Manager Foggan?
Yes, ma'am.
If budget '21 and '22, we have $250,000 each year. Was any of those funds spent?
I don't believe that we were able to spend any of them. We actually, as part of that, we've received, or we were able to get some rock from a pit that ADOT was closing. We had originally worked out a deal where they would haul it if we placed it. And they went back on that deal. And so we ended up hauling the rock from the pit. We didn't have to pay for the rock, but of course, we paid for the cost of moving the rock. That rock will be important to making these improvements. So we, we've done some work on it, just haven't been able to place it yet. We have, we have some design work that's been done as well. So there's been a little bit of money spent on it. But this is really, surrounds the ability to be able to water plants and place rock moving forward.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I was going to ask, Ron, on this traffic interchange landscaping.
Yes.
If, if we're going to have to take care of it, why would we not change that to stone and eliminate the grass altogether?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
The interchange, the area around the interchange, is that what this landscaping is?
Yes.
Why would we not just change it to stone, eliminate the grass? Over time, wouldn't that be cheaper than maintaining the?
I, I think it's plants, not necessarily grass. And I, I'm in favor of what Councilman Ward is going for, is a full desert landscaping, minimal to no plants. That way, we don't have to worry about water usage or ADOT. You know, okay, this is your water pipe. I'm all for. Throw rock. I mean, when we're, when anyone's driving up the 93 into Las Vegas as they're coming right out, what is it, Colorado, no, Boulder, Boulder.
Yeah.
They're coming right out of Boulder, going into Las Vegas, gorgeous landscaping. I don't think that there's a plant in sight. And they do put up like metal, metal art. All in favor of that? All in favor of things looking nice? No need for plants or foliage or any type of intense upkeep?
That's what I was saying.
I got you covered. I'm, I'm, I'm on the same page, Councilman Ward.
Mr. Foggan, may I?
Yeah, please.
So the, the irrigation is really for the existing trees that are out there. The design work that we did has very minimal vegetation for the same reason, just for maintenance. Because the TIs are significant in size. But, and I forget the exact number of trees that are out there, but there's actually a lot of mesquite and some type of pine. And if you've driven by any of them, Stockton Hill's a good example. Right now, we have four trees that we need to go remove. We always have the option to remove all of that vegetation, but part of that was trying to, to retain or keep the existing tree. to retain or keep the existing trees in place. And with no watering system, especially in the long drive period we had, we've seen a significant die-off. There's always a trade-off. But overall, the TIs are just covered with decorative gravel, DG, you know, decomposed granite-type material. There's no seeded areas, there's no, no grass or anything like that.
So, what you're saying is just weeds?
Mm-hmm. Exactly.
Yeah, that's correct.
We mow, we mow it like crazy, but yeah, it's not, it's not a seeded material, whether, you know, a native wildflower mix or a grass mix.
Okay. All right, I guess we're on a five-minute break.
Yep, be back here at quarter till. I know.
And to navigate to the, on, to, um, to land on our runways. Uh, that is, um, a three, basically a three-phase project that will go from 24 through 26. Questions about the NAVAID? Okay, the next one is our airside drainage study. Uh, one of the things that, uh, probably one of our biggest issues, um, at the airport is drainage. And so this drainage study is going to be vital, um, to protecting, um, the airfield as well as the surrounding property. And so, um, we're gonna try to get that complete, uh, by 2024. Um, the next one is, uh, the blast pad expansion. Geez Doug, get up here. I can't remember this one, so. We're gonna, we're gonna have rockets, no. Go ahead.
No, uh, the blast pad is a section of asphalt that's at the, at the ends of the runway. When aircraft go full power, if you don't have the blast pad there, it will actually erode the dirt, um, on the, on the edge of the runway and, uh, cause additional federal safety standard concerns. So this blast pad prevents the erosion. Currently, our blast pads do not meet current federal standards. So it's actually widening them and link, lengthening them a little bit to meet those new federal regulations.
Questions about that? Okay. Uh, the next item, um, is our draw site asphalt overlay. As you may recall, that part of the draw site, um, debate was about, uh, how much asphalt should go back over top of the draw site. Uh, this will actually improve, um, the asphalt over the draw site and will give us that much more usable, um, asphalt in that location, which goes hand in hand with the draw site cleanup. Uh, we've received the federal funding for that and I believe, uh, where we are with it is now working through, uh, the contract to actually do, um, the, the actual cleanup itself.
Yeah, we're just finishing up the guaranteed mass, maximum price proposal. Uh, staff's gonna meet tomorrow with that and then hopefully we'll meet sometime later this week with the Haley and Aldrich folks, uh, with the plan of getting that on the agenda for the next council meeting. And I've also asked if Haley could, uh, basically give a brief presentation of, kind of what they're doing and a timeline so that we can make sure everybody, including the public who are anxiously awaiting this resolution, will kind of have a rough idea.
I'm gonna be Jamie to the question. Projected start date? You always ask that.
Uh, I think that was five years ago. But I, I think once council approves it, I, I believe they're, they're ready to start. They're, they're, they're situated. Uh, it's just, you know, crossing those final Ts and dotting those Is. I believe they're ready to.
So by midsummer?
Oh yeah, I'm hoping within.
I know, I, once again, I said projected, I, I understand.
Sometime in June, maybe July?
That's great news. No, right down July and that way it'll be safe.
It's a month that starts with a J.
I, I, I am pretty optimistic. They want to get moving because they need to get, they need to get the project going as well because their price, uh, uh, whatever the prices they have secured for the project needs to be moved along. So there, there's a sense of urgency amongst all parties, so.
I would for that money as well.
Yeah.
So I just want to reiterate, this is not any monies that is coming out of our budget in any way.
No, this is part of the.
This is for the public.
Yeah, 10-plus years of litigation we've had with the federal government. They did issue us in a settlement, a $52.5 million check that Tina, I'm assuming, is getting interest on. I'm hoping.
Thank you.
Thanks Carl.
Thanks Carl. Any questions about the draws? Okay, um, fence and drainage repair. Uh, so there's a, we have a lot of, a lot of fence around the airport and we have had, uh, damage, uh, with regards to the fence and just the property around the, with the fence because of the monsoons. So this project will, um, help us, uh, get the fence back in repair and, um, make sure that it's all in good working order around the entire, um, airport. The next item is our industrial park expansion land, uh, release. So, um, this is part of our environmental assessment with the FAA and, um, getting that 700 acres released. And then, um, as part of that is our industrial park master plan, development plan, which was re, that has been required as part of our FAA land release, that that work be done at the same time. That is a continuation of what we have been, uh, engaged in and, um, that will, again, just a reminder, that's for the 700 acre, uh, release. Questions about that?
I just wanted to ask about all three of these industrial park projects. If we couldn't move, uh, industrial park under its own section? Because the airport and the industrial park are two separate things and their funding works differently and I wondered if it'd be okay to just, um, make them separate? Not under, not putting industrial park projects under the airport?
Uh, I don't, so the airport is, these industrial, uh, park projects belong to the airport? The money that's generated from them belongs to the airport?
So the airport revenues are paying for industrial park roads?
So... I will let Doug speak to it.
Yes ma'am, uh, give you a little bit of overall. Um, all funding developed inside the industrial park has to go back to the airport under federal regulations. Uh, it was for the three-road project, which is now a two-road project. We spoke to the FAA because when KAA originally built and constructed those roads, they never properly turned them over to the county. So they kind of fell by the wayside. So we spoke to the FAA in that conversation and, uh, told them, look, we'll pay for, with some grant funding and some assistance from some of our tenants inside the industrial park to get these roads back up to county standards and then turn them over to the county, which in long-term better benefits the airport because we no longer have to maintain them.
Well, what about the, um, industrial park master development plan? Is that something that you can get, uh, grant funds to pay for? Because it isn't, it isn't aeronautical, right? It's not.
No ma'am, um, for that right there, because we're trying to release it from federal obligations, um, they're not going to fund for releasing that item. Spend grant funding for the release of the federal lands, which will eventually be sold and those funds come right back to the airport.
So my understanding was that we were supposed to keep all, um, airport items under airport and industrial parks separate because of those FAA guidelines? And if this industrial park master plan is really just about creating industrial land, then that is not, that's gonna make it so it's not on the airside and they should be separate? Am I wrong in that?
Um, well, when it comes to the actual industrial park funds, they're kind of a smaller piece under the larger airport umbrella because the federal government gave the land at the time, if I'm not mistaken, to Mojave County at the time, then slowly it transferred over. Uh, even when we release the lands from federal, uh, obligations, we still have to meet additional federal obligations when it comes to the land sale and even if we go through and we do a leasing of that land, the lease funding comes back to the airport.
Okay.
I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, yep, nope, that, I think was it, right there.
I would say that the, um, the master plan is part of the, is basically a requirement for the FAA land release, so it's even tied to be able to release the 700 acres.
Right, I just remember the rules were very strict about what you could spend airport, airport funds on. And so that's why I was surprised to see industrial park projects, uh, with mingled within this area. So, but you explained it, thank you.
Yes ma'am, it makes you feel a little bit more comfortable when we start going into these gray areas. We do consult with the FAA to make sure we're not gonna be, um, how can I say, non-compliant with grant assurances.
Okay, thank you.
So I have a question for you. Um, in the master plan, we're creating more roads, uh, out there, is that correct? So we are cre, I listened to the last supervisor, uh, meeting and they have just a little bit of heartburn about giving us the airpark and then us putting in the roads and then them having to take them in to maintain them. So my question is, when this master plan is executed, will those roads then be, need to be requested of the county to adopt them into their system?
They will be, um, but, uh, we are often in discussions and we're consult, consulting with FAA and we're getting ideas from other airports, how they developed their released lands to figure out how we could get those roads constructed without spending any airport or city funds. So it's ultimately, uh, any roads that we build out there will have to be turned over to the county.
Right, we get the grant for them, correct? We, we get, we get grant funding or, or we have the funding and then we turn it over to them for the long-term. We gift them with all the maintenance and upkeep of all the, yeah, right? Yeah, they're, they're not appreciating our gift, so, um, I am, I'm just wondering if as that development is happening, we are gonna continue to gift them and they are gonna continue to have heartburn if there's a plan for that?
So there's a requirement for the county to agree to take those roads. They have to be built to the proper standards. We will absolutely build them to those standards. And to be honest with you, the industrial park, they should be absolutely tripping over themselves to accept those roads because the property, just the property tax alone that is occurring in the, in our current existing, uh, industrial park is huge for the county. And another 700 acres developed into industrial property with millions of dollars worth of buildings being built on them. That, a few road maintenance dollars does not add up to what they will collect in property tax.
Well, I appreciate the gift we're giving them, but I, I am so glad that you made that public statement because they are, they are getting it back over time and with development as it's happening, so. And we have a committed ED team to help with the development. So property values go up, taxes go up, there's, it's the gift that keeps on giving.
And, uh, through this master development plan, we have a technical advisory committee and this county engineering slash maintenance is involved to make sure when we put in or design those roads that they do meet their standards.
Right, okay, all right, thank you.
All right, any other questions? Good questions, all right. Uh, the next item is the large aircraft engine testing area and blast fence. That's, uh, been budgeted for fiscal year 2028. Um, it is what we, says it is, is there any questions about that? Okay, the next one is the PAPI replacement. I think I understand what this system does, but Doug, uh, can explain it if people have questions about the PAPI replacement. Any questions about this?
I know it's a funny name. And it makes you feel better, precision approach path indicator.
Basically tells people if they're on course to land properly, so. All right, uh, the next item is runway 1735 and taxiway C seal coat. Uh, this is really, uh, basically, uh, maintenance of those areas. Uh, we've been doing, um, you recall over the last few years, we've done several of these, uh, maintenance programs, um, to the airport, uh, runways and taxiways. Questions about that? Okay, we have the south ramp rehab. Uh, this is a really big project that will, we anticipate starting in fiscal year 26, completing in fiscal year 28. That will be a completion or does it go past that?
Uh, that's when we're hoping for the completion date.
Yeah, that's what I. Okay. The next one is supplemental wind cone relocation. Um, Doug will tell you that I was mean about that and how hard would it be to put up a windsock? And he reminded me that it's much more than that, so. I chased him around about it for, for a while, but I, I can assure you that it's more, much more complicated than just that old windsock for the crop duster that you may have seen, uh, years back. Pretty important for airplane, uh, safety. So questions about the, about that? Okay, uh, next one is the taxi lane F reconstruction. Again, uh, just, uh, efforts to keep all of our areas inside the fence safe for aircraft. That's the same, uh, as taxiway A rehab and geometry, uh, design. That will kick off in fiscal year 28 and then will phase across, uh, the next future years. And then taxiway B design and construction, uh, set for, um, fiscal year 2024 at just about 2.7 million. Uh, grant funding is in place for that. Uh, and all the parties involved have had their allotment assigned. Uh, taxiway D rehabilitation, design and construction. Uh, this is, uh, this is a big project. Again, uh, same thing, this is grant funded. Um, I can't remember, is our match 9%?
Sorry, I had to get my, uh, glasses for that one.
Put your eyes on? It's the, it's the taxiway, uh, D.
Oh, taxiway D, taxiway D was, uh, roughly a little over 91% from the federal government and then, um, us and the A dot pick split the remainder.
That's what it was, so nine, 9% total for A dot and us. So we're gonna cover four and a half percent of that, pretty important project. Um, a terminal drainage improvements. So at our existing terminal, one of the things that has been an ongoing issue with monsoon season is that, um, the water seems to run to the building and not away from it. So just trying to get that fixed. And, um, apron mill and overlay for fiscal year 2025. Any questions? Okay. Thank you for your help Doug. All right, um, so we head into public works, well, I guess airports under public works, sorry. But our next section is for solid waste. So, um, the fleet telemetry, uh, for fiscal year 2025. This is an effort, um, to keep our trucks, know where the trucks are, to help us, uh, monitor and improve routes. And to give us better feedback on, um, how quickly a route is being done and, um, improve efficiencies, uh, with our trash pickup. Questions about the fleet telemetry? Okay, uh, roll-off attachments. So, uh, this will just give us, uh, the ability to put, uh, attachments onto the, the new trash trucks to be able to provide our commercial, um, our commercial services. And then our final thing is our solid waste truck replacement. This is an activity that we engaged in, um, when we increased our solid waste, um, rates. And so we've, of course, have fallen, um, victim to chassis and vehicles, um, being equipped with the garbage portions of the vehicles being behind. So this, uh, fiscal year 2024, it's two, four, four, I don't know, I was thinking two. That will be, uh, four and, um, then for fiscal year 25, uh, two additional. And then we just maintain our replacement cycle, um, throughout, um, for every fiscal year thereon. Questions about solid waste truck replacement? Sir?
Of course, these are enterprise fund, so they, they fund themselves.
That's right, user fees are paying for the replacement.
Okay, thanks.
Yep. Other questions? Okay. Uh, stormwater, uh, so we have a couple of stormwater projects. The airway avenue drainage improvement, uh, that is 2.4 million. Uh, I think we referenced that, uh, storm, uh, that's, that drainage project a little bit earlier when we were talking about, uh, airway and the sports park. And, um, then we have the Bull Mountain interim channel improvement. That's for fiscal year 2025. And then the Hillcrest drainage improvement for $195,000. Any questions about the current stormwater projects? Okay. Um, on to wastewater. So wastewater, uh, we have the need for a new boom truck. That, um, is a pretty piece, important piece of equipment. Allows us to move, uh, necessary equipment, um, in-house. We also have the downtown sewer outfall line interim remediation. Uh, that is an effort to, um, basically protect the current, um, existing outfall line. And then that, um, the outfall line, uh, relocation is scheduled for fiscal year, uh, 2028 at 15.5 million. That is, uh, complete, basically a replacement of the outfall line to the sewer plant, uh, downtown. Questions about the outfall line?
I got a quick one. At the bottom of the justification, it says potential sewer outflow would result in significant fines, remediation costs and liability. Are we getting, are we getting fined somehow or?
We have not been fined, but if we fail to take care of that line and it springs a leak or breaks and spills, we could be subject to fine.
Is that, is that different from underground lines, for instance? Because isn't that what, the current line is exposed? We would be, what, placing it underground or something like that?
That is the, well, where, where we can. Obviously, it's a really rocky area between the downtown and the sewer plant. And so the effort is to try to go as much underground or all underground as we possibly can.
And, uh, I mean, sometimes sewer leaks happen underground as well, right? Uh, not as frequent, I'm sure, but.
Yeah, well, uh.
Just a little, oh, all right, Mr. Yarborough, great.
I guess Kealan thought I needed help on that one. Go ahead.
You were doing fine, thank you. I'm just wondering how it, uh, reduces our liability, which is always a good thing or, you know, I don't want the city to get fined, but don't, aren't there still leaks underground? Mr. Foggan was just telling us what we could get fined if there's a leak above ground.
Yeah, to, to your point, um, Councilman Pat, there's a couple of components to that that, uh, increase the regulatory issues that go along with it. One in particular is it's in a waterway of the US that's been designated by ADQ. So therefore, if we have a discharge, it, um, all discharges come with some or could potentially come with some sort of penalty or fine. That one is certainly compounded.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
And, and so moving it underground would no longer have it in the, in the, I'm sorry, the acronym that you used, it would no longer have it in that area?
That, that's correct. I think the, um, that the current proposal is to take the old trails road alignment, which would get it out of the wash where it currently is, or where a majority of it currently is.
Thank you. Now I understand, all right, I appreciate that.
Yeah, when they put in the original outfall line, they went with the path of least resistance, which was all, a lot of it above ground, so. All right, um, quite, any other questions on the outfall line? Okay. The dump truck replacement, just replacing a, an, a tire dump truck. Uh, the Grace Neal sewer main, uh, that is a project, uh, that is new to the capital project list at about 4.2 million. That, uh, we, we added as part of our, um, sewer, um, the capacity, I almost called it impact, sewer capacity fee, uh, projects. Uh, so that will put, uh, that will, um, basically install a new sewer main, down Grace Neal and out, connect it to our transmission lines out to the Hilltop Sewer Plant, uh, scheduled, currently anticipated for 2024. Questions on Grace Neal?
Yeah, I'm just curious when, when that start date is because of the development, projected development out in that area?
Oh.
Musical chairs.
So the project is under design right now. And I think they're slated to finish the design by the end of year. This year, probably a little bit going into spring of next year and then we'd be looking to start construction after that.
How long has it been in design?
We executed the contract two months ago, I think, something like that. I, I'd have to go back and look at the, when it went to council.
Yeah, it's been two months.
Okay. So it's been in design since, since that time?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So it's not one of those projects that's in backlog?
Um, it's being done by a consultant and so they're working on it.
Okay.
Yeah, no, we just barely added it, so it's already, already moving.
Right, and, and it is extremely important that we keep this one moving too because, I mean, we, we talk about the east bench, but I call this the west bench. So, we, we need to open up the west bench so we don't, it's the northwest bench. So we can continue with development out in that, in that way. And we're at capacity there, correct? For future development?
Yes.
So those projects are being stalled, so it's a domino effect. You know what I'm talking about.
I do.
Thank you, Mr. Alred.
Thanks Phil. Um, the next, uh, four projects are all Hilltop, our Hilltop Plant, uh, upgrades. Uh, it's, um, basically getting to the point where, um, we are seeing wear and tear on the sewer plant. And so, um, these, all, all of these projects listed under Hilltop Plant are just basically keeping the plant up, um, and operational with, uh, and it's time to, it's time to replace, um, these pieces that get a lot of wear and tear and corrode, a lot of corrosion, uh, with, um, sewer treatment. Any questions about Hilltop? Okay, our next one is a hydro vac truck. Uh, these vehicles are really the, the backbone to us providing sewer, and keeping our sewer, uh, system running the way it needs to. They are expensive, but, uh, without them, uh, we really run the risk of having backups into homes and not being able to, to, to fix sewer problems, uh, in a timely manner.
Did we, didn't we already purchase one of these? Or we, or this has just been hanging out and we, we weren't able to get one?
We, we have a back truck already. Kealan speak to it. Since you're at the table.
Yeah, thank you. Actually, we purchased one, I think maybe the one that you're referring to was for the water department last year. Similar piece of equipment, different applications.
Okay, I remember you telling us what this does. So that's why I was thinking we already had one, but it's just for a different department.
For, yeah, the, the most recent one we purchased, we actually purchased two. We, we purchased a truck-mounted hydro excavator, I think it was two years ago. And then we purchased a trailer-mounted one, both for the water department last year.
You probably don't like to share water and sewer equipment? No? Thanks, Kealan. That was going to be my question too. We bought a, we bought a trailer in '23 and now we're buying a truck. But you just, you, you explained the mounted piece of equipment.
Yeah, that's correct. And I'll, I'll compare it to like what a fire apparatus is to the fire department. That's how critical, what, that, that's the equivalent, it's an equivalent piece of equipment in our business or world.
Thank you.
It's the fire trucks of.
The fire truck of the wastewater department.
Yeah, that's, well, when you got, when you got sewer backing up, that's a fire, all right.
Absolutely.
I will say that we do have trailer back truck or back units as well. Those are designed to help us to get into smaller spaces and still do that really important work that those big trucks can't get into, so. Yeah, yeah. Yep. All right. The next, basically the next two sewer capital renewal projects and the sewer extension capital projects, these are ongoing projects that we, that we basically have every single year and basically plan. This is where we tackle pipe replacement when we do pipe rehabilitation. We handle, we handle it in the renewal projects. Kealan, did you have anything you wanted to add to those two line items?
No, sir, I just might underscore it by saying this. Some of the projects that you don't necessarily see, which is a good thing, you know, some, like in our high-traffic areas, for instance, we did a project on Stockton Hill Road near the post office a few years ago. We, we typically partner with a company out of Phoenix called ProPipe. And instead of doing a traditional excavation, they can go in and line the, the infrastructure with a fiberglass liner. It's less intrusive to traffic, especially in high-traffic areas. And it typically, it's typically very little service interruption as well to the customers.
Do you want to speak to the repair and, just the repair and replacement line item as well?
Yeah, I think Phil might have to help me out a little bit with, or, I'm sorry. The repair and replacement, so that one encompasses a number of things. We do manhole rehabilitations. I think we also do the, the one that I just spoke about. And then we also have a biannual, or excuse me, a semi-annual contractor that comes and helps us with cleaning some of the larger diameter pipes in our system to prevent, help prevent corrosion that's caused from hydrogen sulfide.
There's a lot of work that goes into having a sewer system, for sure. Literally. Any questions on any of that? All right. And then the last one is a wood chipper. We, what many people may not know is that we actually chip wood and combine it with the bio solids for composting process. So makes for a good way to use limbs and that kind of stuff.
Not human limbs.
No, no, no. We don't, no, no human limbs. That's, that's a, that's a different movie.
I've seen, or I, I see that this has been in the budget since '22, so congratulations on your chipper. If you get it.
Yeah, no, thank you, Vice Mayor. And, and just to add a little bit of insight to that, there's a regulatory component that I won't get into with that, that we're currently working through with DEQ as far as continuing to compost or not continuing to compost. So that, that's why we currently held off on, on the purchase of that until we get some solid direction from DEQ, which we should have here pretty soon.
Imagine fighting with the state.
Well, I think it's important too, Kealan, that maybe a lot of citizens don't know, but a lot of landscapers and such can haul their, their, like, leave, clean up, all that kind of stuff out to where our, to the Hilltop Sewer Treatment. And that's where it gets composted, make this all, make this all happen.
That's correct, yeah. So both individual homeowners and landscapers bring a majority of their tree trimmings out to our Hilltop Facility. And then, of course, we use that as the carbon source that we mix with the bio solids to create compost.
That's a great service we offer, so, thanks.
Thank you. All right. Water. So we have the automated meter reading system. This is an ongoing project where we're basically replacing meters and adding radio read meters. And we'll continue to do that.
I had a question on that.
Yes.
How much have we spent so far? I remember in 2019, we were given an estimate of about $4 million to replace all of the meters. And I'm just wondering, since then, how much progress have we actually made?
About 1.5 million.
1.5 million?
Yep.
So quite a long ways still to go.
Are those, are those costs still holding true? The estimate?
Yeah.
Of four?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. I don't remember what percentage, Kealan, of the system has radio read meters now? I can't remember where we are.
So currently, we've been installing those with our in-house staff. And typically, we do, so all the new construction meters get a radio read. And then we also have a temp services crew that is dedicated to replacing some of the older meters, whether it be by date or flow-through, right? So to answer your question, we've got about 23,000 customers, give or take. And we've got about 3,000 of those customers currently using radio reads.
All right. Next one is an exciting backhoe replacement. That's just a standard backhoe. The distribution line replacement, this is an ongoing line item that we have, kind of like with the sewer, just basically a running line item with, you can see kind of off-years and on-years and basically tackling distribution lines, making sure that we have budget money for each year to do that. We are in the process of drought contingency plan. This, the drought contingency plan is pretty important as we would like to apply for some federal and state grants for our efforts on drought contingency. And this, completing this plan will actually allow us to apply for bigger grants than what we've been able to do in the past. So that's the drought contingency plan. Our dry well installation, this is an effort that we started back, what, 2019, I believe, and have just been committed to doing as many dry wells as we can with the money, the money that has been budgeted. I want to say dry wells, do we have 10 dry wells in place now? I want to say 10, yeah. So we have 10 dry wells. And like I said, we, we basically try to do as many as we possibly can each year with the money allotted. And we're going to try to continue to do that as we move forward. Generally, those dry wells have gone into detention basins or new detention basins or into areas where there's good filtration and an opportunity to capture as much of that runoff water as we can. Dump truck, talked about dump trucks. Engineering annex remodel, I think we covered this in one of our budget meetings earlier. This, just a reminder, this is the entryway, providing better circulation of customers along with safety. Cubicle giving us the ability to improve office space for our employees. And one of the most important things, I think, is making a fix to our conference room that is in much need of, of upgrade. Any questions about the, that remodel? Okay. The next one, oh, the hydro vac trailer, talked about a hydro vac trailer already. That really gives us the ability to have close, closer space areas that we have access to hydro vac service. 250,000, our main tanks, transmission line phase two. That's a two-point, almost $2.8 million project that actually will improve our transmission line away from our, our storage tank facilities. We've already completed phase one, completed this year, right? Yeah, so phase one completed this year. This is phase two of that project, so. The North Ridge Storage Tank, 30,000. This is an evaluation of the tank.
If you don't mind, I'll defer to Phil.
Oh, Phil's going to take this? Okay, musical chairs.
So right now, what we're doing is a design concept. This will be a new tank that we're looking to build south of town to feed kind of the foothills area. It'll provide us some better opportunity for pressure and help us get rid of a hydro tank. So right now, we're just kind of doing the preliminary engineering and siting and trying to figure out where we need land and easements.
Yeah.
How much water can these tanks hold? Or?
As big as you want.
This one, how much water can this one?
I think we're looking at half a million gallons for this one.
Yeah, most of our tanks, we look at half a million or a million. There's bigger. There's bigger. I actually forgot, yeah, so the construction of this is not anticipated until fiscal year 2028. We have been doing some evaluation of existing tanks, just to make sure, because some of these, these tanks have a pretty long life. I want to say the last one we evaluated was built in the 60s? Is that right? 65, yeah. So we're getting good life out of these tanks. But that doesn't replace the need for system pressure and redundancy throughout the water system, so. Look forward to that one coming online. The next line item is our pumping equipment. Obviously, our water system depends on pumping the water out of the ground. This line item basically gives us the ability to replace pumps and take care of the pumping systems each, each year. We always hope to stay ahead of this so that we don't have pump failure, but that does happen from time to time. But this, by doing this, it really keeps our pumping equipment up to date and running the way it should. The Santa Rosa Transmission Line, this is a big project, is very important. $5.6 million. This is the Kingman Crossing. Is this the Kingman Crossing?
It will serve, it'll, transmission line to Kingman Crossing area.
Yeah. So this will, this will give us expansion of water service in that area, both sides of the freeway.
And provide us a redundant source to the east side as well.
Right. Questions about the Santa Rosa Transmission Line? Okay. Service lines, just basically, this is again, one of those line items that's ongoing to take care of service lines. We carry this each year in a, basically an effort to make sure that there's money to take care of our service lines. Source water meters. So I'll let, Kealan, you want to speak to the, I don't know that I, I understand those well enough to be able to speak to them, so.
I think, so the, the source water meter upgrades was identified as part of our water loss audit. So in doing so, we hired a company out of Phoenix to come up and check to see the accuracy of our source water meters, meaning at our well sites and our booster stations, right? And in doing so, we found that there were some as much as 24% off, you know, which when you're looking at, you know, a year's worth of water, that adds up quickly. So we want to, most of these meters, if they're not the original ones, they're pretty close to it. So we want to update those with a mag-style meter, right? They're more efficient, they're more accurate. And the longevity of them on those particular meters are certainly longer.
Questions about those? All right. Next one is the Wallack Ranch Distribution Improvements. So this is a capital project that's scheduled for the start of fiscal year or to start in fiscal year 2027 and wrap up in fiscal year 2028. It is what it says it is. It's improvements to the water lines in that, in the Wallack Ranch area. The well site chlorine and mortar control cabinet upgrades. This really to make sure that we're providing the mixing and controls of the chemicals in our, basically in our distribution system. This will do that better than what we're currently able to do. And then our, the, the one that we've been working on and want to make sure that we continue to work on is the well site evaluation and basically identifying those areas, both in the Wal, the Walapai Aquifer and the San Sacramento Basin, that we have a good, solid plan for where we're going to add our well sites moving forward. So questions about water capital projects? Okay. Is that all of them? There should be more. So that takes us to the end of our capital projects. So basically, our five-year total for capital projects, I think we covered this at the beginning of the, the budget presentation, but that's 376,000, or million 371,042. And as was explained, a great deal of this is money coming in from outside of the city through grants and other contributions. So that concludes our capital improvement plan. And we will move on to debt management. So I know there's been some questions about it. So I will let Tina cover debt capacity.
Gosh, what a topic to talk about.
Gosh, what a topic to talk about at 8:40 at night. There's only a few slides, though, but... So we only have currently a few issuances or outstanding debt, but Councilman Walker asked a couple of months ago for us to cover some of the debt capacity, and this is a great opportunity to do that, so thank you, Councilman Walker. Yeah, so it's his fault that we're talking about this at 8:40 at night. So the common types of debt that we issue are general obligation bonds, and then there are different types of excise tax revenue bonds, utility revenue bonds, and WIFIL loans. But I want to highlight the general obligation bonds, because general obligation bonds are bonds that must be approved by the voters, because what we're basically doing is imposing a property tax upon property owners, so they have to approve of that. And so our debt is then secured by a secondary property tax.
And those have like a sunset, right? Like they end eventually, is that right?
Yeah, absolutely. It's for the term of whatever you include in that language on the ballot. And so the constitution, not the state statutes, but the state constitution actually dictates how much debt can be issued, because it's against your assessed valuation, the city kingman's assessed valuation. So depending on the type of project that it is, it can be 6% of your assessed valuation, which is about $15 million currently, or depending on the type of project, so if it's a water project, sewer project, public safety facility, you can actually issue up to 26% of your assessed valuation, and that's closer to over $60 million that you could issue debt on. So those are general obligation bonds. We do not currently have any of those. We have excise tax revenue bonds, which are our unfunded liability, the PSPRS unfunded liability bonds. And then we have utility revenue bonds that we are proposing to issue in the upcoming years for the five-year capital plan, and I'll talk about that on the next page. And we currently have WIFIL loans, and all of those are backed by certain types of revenues. So either general fund revenues, or if it's a utility revenue bond, by that specific utility fund. So our current outstanding debt, we just have a few issuances. We have two WIFIL loans. Those both mature in the late 2020s and in 2030. At the end of this fiscal year, we'll owe just about $16 million on those. We have our PSPRS unfunded liability, which is secured with an excise tax revenue bond, about $35 million at the end of this fiscal year, and that doesn't mature until 2037. And then we have that improvement district that we spoke about a few council meetings ago. It's actually $790,000 that we actually will have at the end of 2023. I missed a payment in there. I'm excited to be done with it. That's probably the case. January of 2025 is the maturity date on that particular issuance. So then, looking at the fiscal year '24 recommended budget and the five-year capital improvement plan, what we're recommending or proposing for debt issuances are above. And we have a couple of water projects that we are recommending to issue some debt towards. We do have cash to fund some of those projects, but we will need debt to secure the rest of the funding for them, and that's the Santa Rosa Transmission Main and Distribution Line improvements. We have the Kingman Crossing Boulevard and the Rancho Santa Fe Parkway Roads and Utility Infrastructure, although we've got contributions for a majority of those projects. As you'll see, the project cost on the five-year plan is pretty large compared to what we're planning to borrow, but we will need to borrow monies to complete those projects. And then we have our Fire Station 5 and Recreation Center that we are planning to borrow monies for. So again, pledging general fund monies for that Fire Station 5 project. But the Recreation Center, we're actually proposing to issue a general obligation bond and going to the voters, asking for a portion of those monies, which it sounds like we might be changing course on that particular project, but... And then we have the downtown sewer outfall line. This is a project that isn't in the five-year plan until fiscal year '28, but there is a portion of that particular project that we would be recommending to issue debt for, and that's how we will be funding those projects. So just wanted to share with you what's in the five-year plan and how some of the funding sources are for those particular projects. And of course, any time that we issue debt, it will come to Council for Council's final approval and before we move forward with that.
Tina, I'm sorry, how do excise taxes work again? They're not like a temporary property tax, like the general obligation bonds. Like where do they come from?
Local taxes, state shared revenues is what covers the debt service for those, so it just comes out of the general fund revenues.
Oh, okay, so it would just be a portion allocated from our general fund or our sales tax to go towards like building Fire Station Number 5?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. And all of those monies, all of those debt service payments are included in our recommended five-year forecast also, so they're already included in that.
And I'm not trying to hold everyone up, but do we have a estimated for fiscal year 2024 what our sales tax revenue was? Just remind me.
About $29.3 million, $29.1 million.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Absolutely. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Or, that's it? Is the mayor gonna adjourn us?
Hopefully.
Hopefully.
I got nothing.
You've got nothing. You're out of gas.
Pretty much.
Okay, once again, thanks to all department heads, of course, councilors for being here, Vice Mayor, everybody here for participating in this and being available so that you can answer all our questions. That's really what's most important. And I appreciate all the questions that have been asked, because it helps enlighten our constituents, and really, that's what we're here for, to represent them, so... And of course, our employees, too. We need to remember them. They helped push all this forward, too, as a city. So once again, thanks, and I think we are adjourned.